Good afternoon, everyone. We will call the September State Board work session to come to order. Thank you all for being here and thank you to our audience that's watching us being streamed. Wanted to call your attention in the beginning to a little plaque in front of you that gives our mission statement that we worked very diligently on when we put our strategic plan together. These will be at your places each month and just to kind of give us a little reminder of why we're here and who we are working for, the people of Nebraska and their educational opportunities. So, thank you for the department for putting that together for us. So, we'll call the meeting to order and Denise, will you please call the roll?
Lisa Fricki.
Here.
Patsy Cojones.
Here.
Rachel Wise.
Here.
John Whittsle.
Here.
Molly O'Halloran.
Present.
Patricia Tam.
Yes.
Maureen Nichols.
Yes.
Patrick McPherson.
Here.
Commissioner Blumstedt.
Present.
All present.
Okay. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. And I would remind you to engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are finished speaking and I would ask everyone to please turn personal cell phones off. We will move on to item two, the Commissioners' Report and Agenda Overview. Commissioner.
Yeah, first of all, like normal, if you had any questions on consent agenda items or anything that you would like to go ahead and pull off, that pink slip is there for you. And Sarah is here today instead of Scott. Scott's out of town, but that box in front of Sarah is where you can put those pink slips if you had any questions on consent agenda items. So, I guess I can move on to the Rules.
Yes, please.
Report that's attached to it. There's really not a lot more to report. There are two rules still being under consideration by the Attorney Generals, Rule 71 and Rule 72, both rules I think, if I remember right. We just took action on those last month, so they're in front of the Attorney General right now as part of that process. Otherwise, Ryan, go ahead and come up. I want to say a couple things as he's doing that. Number one, today, we do have a presentation by the ESU Coordinating Council, Dave Ludwig, and I believe Dan Schnoz from ESU III will also be here. They had their regular meetings in Kearney and so he let me know they're on their way. I think they'll be here in plenty of time, but just in case we can adjust the order of the agenda to accommodate them and plenty of other things going on. But I'm going to turn it over to Ryan and he can give you an update on a few other fronts.
I have one brief information item for you. As a member of the National Association of State Boards of Education, you might have received the Delegate Assembly Packet via email. I place that in Spark Meetings for easy reference for you. I encourage you to review that information. It includes the business of that upcoming meeting, the election of officers, their position on different policies and the organization's policies. So, whether you're attending the meeting or not, that information is there for you to review and the board can continue conversation on what that will look like for Nebraska.
Thanks, Ryan. We will move on to item three, Standing Committee Reports. Maureen, would you please report on the AQUEST Teaching and Learning Domain?
Okay. We had a very productive committee meeting this morning. We had two action items that are coming forward from the Teaching and Learning Domain meeting. And the first action is to approve Nebraska's college and career-ready standards for science. The committee and board have been receiving information over the course of the last 18 months related to the process to revise the 2010 science standards. The board reviewed the first draft in May and last month, we were presented with a revised draft as a result of public input. And the committee has asked that Cory Epler and Sarah Cooper share with the board highlights of post-secondary involvement in the process related to the public letters of support from Nebraska institutions of higher education. So Cory and Sarah, please come forward.
Well, good afternoon. For the record, I'm Cory Epler, Chief Academic Officer for NDE.
And I'm Sarah Cooper, Science Education Specialist for NDE.
We are really excited to be here once again and as Maureen was saying, over the last 18 months, we've been working really hard on the revision of the Nebraska science standards and specifically today, hope to have an opportunity to answer questions, highlight a few key pieces relative to the post-secondary endorsement of our standards as college and career-ready with the anticipated action item that will be presented tomorrow. So, I provided hard copies and electronic copies are also in the online for your viewing, but one thing that I wanted to reference first is on the first document is just a reminder of the timeline that we talked about and went in more in-depth last month relative to the process that highlighted how we've engaged stakeholders in this conversation as well as providing updates to the State Board and the involvement of post-secondary experts in this process as well. You do have a copy of the revised draft there. Between last month and this month, there were some minor changes made, no significant content changes, much of it gets out to formatting. We were able to continue to hear from our stakeholders relative to the great deal of public comment that we had last month and as a result of that, we're able to take that information back to our subject matter experts and determine whether or not those decisions, those comments would be incorporated into the standards. And in some cases, some of the minor changes that we made did reflect comments that were brought forward last month. The main thing that I'd really like to point out to you, and again, there are four separate documents in the e-meeting system that are letters of support from each of the four post-secondary institutions. So, as we began this process, the charge from you, the State Board, was to develop standards that reflect the expectations for college and career readiness. And we don't take that lightly. We think that's really critically important and a key part of this process is ensuring that post-secondary representatives from all four of our systems, from the university system, from the state college system, from the community colleges, as well as our independent and private institutions, participate in and provide feedback relative to the content that should be included. I've often been asked, who are the scientists that weigh in on the content included in the standards? Well, I will argue that our scientists are post-secondary subject matter experts. And specifically, I'll highlight the involvement of the university. The University of Nebraska system has participated very actively in this process. We had over 90 faculty members that in some way, shape, or form contributed to the content that you see in these standards. We think that's significant. We think that those are our subject matter experts in sciences that truly shape the content for K-12 science education. And that being said, I offer a letter of support from Provost Fritz relative to the university system designation of the science standards as being college and career-ready. And I don't think we should really take that lightly, the fact that the university system has said that when mastered, these standards set students up for success. And I think that that intentional engagement of our post-secondary partners makes us feel really good. It makes us feel really confident that we've got a very rigorous set of standards that raises the bar for K-12 science education and that ultimately prepares our students for life after high school. The fact that we've engaged employers in this conversation, that we've ensured that it's not only about college readiness, but it reflects the expectations for career readiness as well. So, the letter of support from the independent and private institutions is a little bit different. I have individual letters of support from each of those institutions, not all of the institutions, I'll say. I know some letters are en route, but they don't have an organization this year. They're kind of reforming the Association of Independent and Private Institutions of Nebraska. So, we went to directly to the institutions to ask for letters of support from either their provost or president or associate vice president. So, I did want to specifically, you know, call out the support of post-secondary education and the fact, like mathematics and like English Language Arts, we have letters of support designating these standards as college and career-ready. I think what we know is that you all will vote on tomorrow is what Sarah and I talk about as the policy document. There is a host of other pieces that wrap around this policy document. Sarah's been working really, really hard on those additional support pieces for educators because we do think that this provides a significant shift in how science is taught in Nebraska. And not only science, but we think it offers a really great lens for interdisciplinary teaching and learning, learning science and learning about science through context that are not just science. So, we think about how social studies fits into this in our conversations around civics. We know that fine arts play a role as we think about those critical science and engineering practices, how mathematics plays a role as well as career and technical education. So, while the document may look really sciency, for lack of a better term, it is and those conversations around interdisciplinary teaching and learning will be in those support pieces that we continue to work on. So, I'll stop there. Sarah?
I think we're just excited to have these standards passed and get them in the hands of our teachers and more importantly, having our students learning with this new vision in mind.
And they were Nebraska, written by Nebraska educators. I'll emphasize that. That is a very powerful and I think our standards-writing teams continue to articulate that it's some of the best professional learning that they have is when they actually get to write the standards. So, quite a team that Sarah has empowered to set a vision for science education and I'm beyond proud of the team and beyond proud of the work that Sarah's done.
Board members, do you have any questions? Patsy?
You probably already know the question that's coming from me, but considering all of my research and the people that I've visited with, well, first of all, let me say that I want to go back for a second and say, I think your science standards are absolutely amazing and my question is a question that points to the future. And I like the way Nebraska is designing things to set the pace, to look forward into the future. Now, we'll go back to what my research and the people that I've visited with, that sort of thing. It seems to me that one of the most important things as we create standards in any of the fields of education is that we're preparing for 10, 15, 20 years down the road and jobs and occupations 15, 20 years down the road in science are all going to depend on something called innovation or creativity. So, I see that STEAM should at least be mentioned, science, technology, engineering, the arts and mathematics should be at least mentioned within this document somewhere as a placeholder as to where we are probably headed in science education and all kinds of the disciplines of education. And I don't see it in there. I think it would be a simple thing to do and it would, once again, just as AQUEST does, our strategic plan does, set us out ahead of many of the other states. And I see like, I have national fine arts reports where there's like 17 or 18 states who have done this. I would like to see us at least mention it. So, I guess my question is, why not?
And I think that's a really great point and as we continue to think about those support pieces that I mentioned versus the policy document, that's where I think the conversations around interdisciplinary teaching and learning will come out or in those wraparound pieces. We do have mathematics standards, we do have fine art standards and science standards and so as we think about how we continue to showcase and provide exemplars to what that looks like, I see it as occurring in the supports that we provide on the backside of this as opposed to in what I would say is the policy document specifically. Even though it's not explicit, I will say implicitly that it's resounding in there as we think about the science and engineering practices that we're asking students not only to be innovative and think like a scientist, but we're asking them to develop models. We're asking them to use engineering practices, asking them within cross-cutting concepts to identify patterns. So, I think those pieces are within there. I see it as our job on the support materials to really be explicit about making those connections. And we do have work to do relative to that and I agree 100%.
And I think that part of that is including those icons in this document as we think about the math and the English Language Arts connections are pretty explicit in the science and engineering practices. The engineering design piece, drawing attention to that with the dark-colored gear, all of those in the teacher-supporting documents are going to be linked to fine and performing arts standards that support design in those pieces that you see in words in that document related to drawing sketches and again, being innovative and creative will really see those, the visual icon will take them to a connecting piece in this teacher-supporting document where they see those explicit connections.
And the other thing I'll add, one of the resources that we had at the table in development was the Nebraska Career Readiness Standards, which one of the standards in there is around creativity and innovation. And so, that was our challenge is versus just keeping it separate is being really intentional about the integration of it within because we found that, and the same thing with mathematics or ELA, that when we have the career readiness standards as an add-on versus actually integrating it within the standards, that it's often missed. So, that was part of our charge and part of our quality checklist for our standards is have the Nebraska Career Readiness Standards been integrated and making sure that they are reflected within that. So, I, again, I think we have work to do relative to those supports that we provide and the type of professional learning that we provide around that. I do think that there's the, much of what you're describing is embedded within the standards.
I just have one other question concerning this and then I'll back off here, but you do mention STEM and in your document and there are standards for mathematics as well. So, justifying not mentioning STEAM because there are fine art standards. Do you know?
Yeah, what page are you on?
Yeah, I'll have to look. Maybe I'm looking at a different document too because I've been looking at a different one, lots of different ones. If not, I'll stand corrected. That happens all the time. Okay. Okay. Well, I don't have time to go through the whole document, so again, and I was sure that you had. I should have marked it for you. Okay.
We'll take a look.
Yeah. Do, because there are standards for mathematics, et cetera. So, I just was interested in making sure that that creative, innovative part, I just keep hearing it over and over and over again. So, anything that you can do to make that a part of that. I think that, here's what I've been reading about STEAM approach is that not only does it help the gifted students, of course, but it also helps those students of poverty. It also helps that middle class that we so seldom talk about, the middle students that we neglect and kids that are maybe wanting to drop out of school. And so, it allows teachers to really reach in and find very creative ways of presenting it. And I think it has a history. If you look at somebody like Galileo or you look at somebody like Da Vinci who are, you know, considered scientists and artists, both, you see that that might be one of the missing pieces in education that we might want to grab a hold of and use again to our advantage for our students. So...
And I would say we agree with you 100%.
Okay.
Molly?
I have just a question. This is kind of a segue from what Patsy was talking about. If you go to the third page where the icons are, under Engineering, Technology and Applications of Science Connections, in the second sentence, it says, "These connections highlight the interdependence of science, engineering, and technology." And could you just add the word innovation to that sentence so it would read, "In technology that drives the research, innovation, and development cycle where discoveries in science lead to new technologies developed using the engineering design process." I would just, I would just say, kind of to piggyback what you were talking about, science isn't about just what it used to be. A lot of our future industries are going to be built that we haven't imagined today. And you can do this where you will, but I do believe creativity and innovation are essential to future career development. If you had talked to the people that started Google and Apple and Uber and, no one would have thought of that years ago. So, innovation is definitely part of science. And I would put it there. I don't think that will mess with your actual document, it's just a preface.
Yep.
Rachel?
And I think this is a great discussion and I just want to highlight from our conversation earlier, the amount of work. I think you said you've got over 300 pages of implementation strategies already put together and I think what's important from my view going forward is how do we help schools and guide schools in their work in curriculum development? Because I think where the intersection really occurs is at the school level in the curriculum development process. And if we get to a point where we're trying to define the curriculum, I think that really moves away from the balance between state and local control in these processes. But I think giving examples and continuing to build in the, maybe even some models of examples can help show that cross-curricular process and continue to keep us having pretty much, you know, content-specific standards. And I think there's a value in that. It helps us really understand the standards in that particular content area, not to preclude the importance of the integration of those standards across other areas and that integration ideally occurs at that curriculum level, in that curriculum development level. So, maybe moving forward, you know, helping to build some models and examples would help to really show the relationship of science with other disciplines in that integrated process.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes. We've heard a lot of testimony over the last several months here and we've all gotten lots of emails, I know, and some phone calls. Two of the big topics obviously have been evolution as well as climate change, some thinking climate change was, you know, shouldn't be there, some thinking that, you know, it shouldn't have been revised in the last set of revisions. Question for you is, since the August presentation of the standards, have there been any changes in those two areas on these standards, on the ones you're presenting us today?
No.
No.
Okay.
And that's us going back to our subject matter experts from the university system primarily to help us determine whether or not, in those expert opinions, that those changes need to be made. I do think it's important to note that while climate change is getting a lot of attention in this particular set of standards, it's not new. It was included in the 2010 standards as well. It may not have said climate change specifically, but it's not a new topic that's being introduced to the schools. It was in the 2010 version as well.
Okay. Next is, how would you rate the involvement that parents have had as stakeholders in this process? Because I've spoken in the past, I don't think, I haven't thought parents had enough input certainly in mathematics. How would you rate the input that parents have had as stakeholders in this process?
What's my scale?
Well, anything would be better than the mathematics was, probably.
Well, I will say if we were to compare it to mathematics, it's 20 times better because I think on the parental survey, or on the survey, it's back in my office, I think it was around 20-some percent of, from parents or from non-educators or, which includes approximately 20-some students as well, took the input survey. So, as a standalone, I think that it can always be better and I know that this is something that we're wrestling with is what is the best way to have direct contact with parents. Districts, we, if we were to approach a district to help us, we may or may not get help in that manner. You know, every district may have an email database that emails go directly to parents, but we aren't able to communicate via that avenue. We did try some additional strategies with asking principals to put it in their newsletter, social media, contacting the Nebraska PTA, really trying hard, but it doesn't seem to be a silver bullet relative to the best way to do that. So, I would say much, much better than mathematics, still a lot of room for improvement.
And don't forget my radio and TV.
Yes, yes. How can I forget? How can I forget Sarah was on the radio and TV quite a bit, too?
And when you said 20% of responses, how many responses were you talking about?
We had over 700 for the survey.
Okay. And then one last question. I noticed that the final implementation for grades two, five, eight, and 11 doesn't come until the 2021 year, which means that really, two years later almost, you're going to start developing new standards. Is that an adequate timeline? And I mean, does that make sense, really?
So, previously, we'd been on the five-year revision cycle, which we would have implemented. So, we really now with a seven-year cycle have two extra years. We have taken one of these years on the front end as exploration. So, we still have that one more year on the back end. So, compared to where we were on a five-year implementation cycle, this is a much better timeline. And again, that opportunity to explore on the front end, especially with the big changes, you know, this might not be the implementation timeline that we would use the next round, but because of the big shifts moving to grade level, this new way of thinking about teaching and learning, that huge shift in assessment that's going to come with this, we need this time on the front end to prepare our teachers and to prepare our districts for looking at new resources that aren't quite there yet. So, this gives them that time.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I received a lot of letters for and against the science standards and what I appreciated was when someone emailed me with generalities, I would just, you know, email them back and say, what section of the science standards are you referring to? You know, we need specific details and sometimes they would do that. And when I received detailed information, I would forward it to Cory and he would share it with Sarah. And so, there have been a lot of changes, some that I forwarded to Cory, they had already made on their own. And there have been changes made from stakeholder involvement and I think that's important to know. So, I appreciate all of the experts from every, you know, whether it's teachers, university people, science experts, but there was input that made change from everyday people and so I thank you for that.
Well, and I appreciate that because some of the comments that were brought up at the last board meeting, like literally, we had already made those changes. So, I think folks didn't have the most recent version of the standards, so, and that's reassuring for us. We're like, okay, we've already got that, got that taken care of.
John?
Thank you, Mo. Cory, I got to say that I think the efforts that you and your staff have been exemplary. I meant, they've just been exceptional and brought credit upon yourself and this department for sure. So, thank you very much for all you did. After reading all the information that we did get, if in regards to your feedback, valuations and so forth, I went out on my own and had the opportunity to speak with the curriculum directors and their staffs in my district. And I was, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to let Lisa follow up because she did the same thing in her district. And what we found is that everybody knows that the curriculum directors and their staff at community, at schools are literally the heart of what students are taught. There's no doubt about it. And in regards to building the curriculum, besides their functional jobs... And in regards to building the curriculum, besides their, their functional job of building the curriculum, they're, they seek, if you will, inputs. They seek advice, they seek information from their state board, from their parents, from the ESUs. They seek out information and feedback from the local communities and businesses and say, "What, what do we need for our communities? Where should we go?" So it's a total buy-in by a whole community. And the same statement was said for the three districts I spoke with. They liked the standards. They look forward to it, and they'd had no problems in regards to implementing the standards whatsoever. They feel like it's going to carry our students in the future, and they are very much looking forward to it. So thank you very much. I know Lisa and I have some adage.
Lisa.
Kind of put me on the spot there, John, but I'm glad you mentioned it. Out of the six districts in my district two, I heard from all but one. And one in particular caught my attention. They all supported the science standards very highly. And Rex Anderson from Gretna, they started working on changing the science standards two years ago. You know, thinking ahead, and the direction that they had gone with all the feedback that John had mentioned have, what they have after two years integrates just perfectly with the direction you're taking. So, yeah, our, my district two, superintendents, curriculum directors, support the science standards. Thank you.
Molly.
I just had a brief remark to follow up on. I know the two points of contention were the evolution and then the climate weather segments. But I took some time to talk to some students in Western Nebraska that are members of FAA. And they said they are really excited about the science standards because their success on the farm has changed than what it was when their grandparents were there. And it's all about, how is the weather impacting the soil? How can I better distribute the, the right ingredients to have the most robust crops that are healthiest for my people? And, and it's, it's really about innovation and creativity. And so when you, I, I just, I, as I listened to them, I actually said, "Well, are you worried that you're deciding if climate change is man-induced?" And they said, "That isn't really our focus. Our focus is, when the weather changed, how can we best adapt and be successful in the land that we love?" And to me, that just framed it in such a nice little pocket. So I think they're looking for, and then another thing they said is, "We want to discuss it. This is what critical thinking's about, not just memorizing this is what it is, but how does it apply to our lives?" Thank you.
Patsy.
Well, I wanted to make sure that I told you the thing that I think is the most, the greatest strength of these standards. For me, as a teacher, it is the involvement of the students in the process of learning. And it pervades the entire document. And I know, as a teacher of many, many years, that when students are in charge of many facets of their learning, not all of them, the teacher's still got a responsibility in that guidance responsibility, that they learn and they take off. And I think Molly's statement about these students from Western Nebraska will be the example of how the science standards are going to work in the classroom across the entire state. Because students have a powerful part to play in the standards that you created. So kudos for that.
And I just want to add, not just to Sarah and Cory, but to the group, that last month, as I was finishing my last month of physical therapy on my wrist, two chairs down sat one of the members of the writing team and editing team. And there were a couple of times I felt sorry for the, the clients in between us. Because this teacher is so passionate about the work that she did and the honors that she gave to Sarah in her leadership in the, in working these standards. So I think we've got a good thing going for us. And Sarah, thank you, and Cory, thank you as well.
Thank you.
And I do want to add that the committee recommends approving tomorrow Nebraska's college and career-ready standards for science. And the second action item for tomorrow is to authorize the commissioner, thank you, Sarah and Cory.
Thank you.
The second action item is to authorize the commissioner to set cut scores for the ACT. The committee has been engaged with this process over the past months with two members of the committee attending the ACT standard-setting committee. Thank you, Rachel and Lisa. The committee discussed this matter in length, in depth, last month. And we are bringing forth a recommendation to the board this month. We've asked Jeremy Henninger and Valerie Foye and Cory Epler, I think Cory's gone, he's kind of, okay, to share more information on this topic, to, to inform you. So Jeremy and Valerie?
Very good. For the record, Jeremy Henninger, I'm the Assistant Director of Statewide Assessment.
And I'm Valerie Foye, the Director of Statewide Assessment.
As you remember, last month, we were, before you, talking about ELA cut scores for the three through eight, general and alternate. At that time, we didn't bring forward the, the recommendation for the cut scores for the ACT because we had really great conversations in the committee and, and really wanted us to bring back more information before we brought the, the recommendations forward. And I think that turned out well overall, and I want to kind of share some of those pieces with you. So we're here providing the commissioner's recommendation about those, those cut scores for the ACT. Some of the considerations we've had during this time, we had a very detailed process that lasted throughout the summer where we brought in stakeholders to give input into this process. Like was said, we had board members as part of that. And so one of the things that we were really, some of the things that we really were considering as we were working on these recommendations for this month, I want to kind of put out there and so that everybody has that information. One is to simplify and clarify. One thing that we heard overall is this was the ACT. It's different than the other tests that we give. And so let's just be forward about that and be transparent in that. If it's going to be the ACT, let's make this cut scores about ACT. And that's something that we tried to do, is simplify and clarify that because we want to minimize confusion with other sources. Since it's ACT, ACT's putting a lot of information out about their own scores. And we don't want confusion about what we say about those scores and what ACT says about those scores. So, so some of the efforts that we've gone to are try to, try to minimize any possible confusions that might happen. And then we also want to honor all the various concerns that were coming to the table. Our districts really had a lot of input, or actually stakeholders, because there was post-secondary people there. There was board members there, there was counselors and district personnel there. And, and try to make sure that all of those concerns were being voiced in the recommendation that's coming to you. And, and so we try to make sure we did that in these recommendations. And ultimately, we wanted to find a Nebraska way forward. For many states, they've adopted, I shouldn't say many, some states have adopted the ACT as, as a test at their 11th grade, and they've found their own ways to do this. We took that information, we took the information about how standard setting is traditionally done, and other tests. And, and what we had to do is find a Nebraska way forward so that we felt good and, and, and write about the information that we're putting out there about this test and about what this test means. And so those were all kind of considerations that we had as we went through this. So the recommendation calls for three different performance levels. The topmost level would be the ACT benchmark level. And, and we are using ACT's bench, their definition around benchmark, and we'll share that with you in just a second. The, the, the second level is on track. Those two levels would meet expectations. The third level, the bottom level, the developing, that would be, does not meet expectations. So ACT benchmark and on track meet those expectations, developing does not. So I've provided for you, and we have up on the screen, the definitions. Those are also printed out for you as well. And so this is really, this definition is really based on what ACT says these benchmarks mean. So students that meet or exceed the ACT college readiness benchmarks are equipped to enroll without remediation and succeed in a credit-bearing first-year course at a two-year or four-year institution, a trade school or technical school. Students have at least a 50% chance of getting a B or better, and a 75% chance of getting C or better in a first-year-related content course. And that's based, those numbers, those probabilities are based on ACT's research into students and their scores and the grades they get in, in post-secondary institutions. And so that really is what that would mean. If, if a student makes that level or above, they've hit that or exceeded that level. The on-track level, students are approaching the ACT readiness benchmark and are likely to be able to access credit-bearing first-year-related content courses at some Nebraska post-secondary institutions without remediation. You'll notice some words in there, some caveats, some likely and some. It would be really nice to be able to say this is universal. The problem is, post-secondary institutions in Nebraska don't use the same ACT score across the board. So we can't pick one score that does this for all institutions. And, and I have some additional data to show you as well, to show you exactly what I mean about that. The other part that I'll mention about this is, this really is about access to credit-bearing courses. That's where we want the emphasis to be, and that's how those, those numbers were decided. Is what does access to credit-bearing first-year courses mean? That was a big takeaway from the committee this summer, that they wanted this to be about this. And I think it, it makes sense that we say that this cut score is based on that. So in both cases of these cuts, it's based around how, how the ACT is used. ACT puts out a lot of information, information about the benchmark. And then our colleges, post-secondary institutions use ACT and other test scores as well about figuring out where to place students in courses. Developing, students at the developing level are likely to need developmental courses before being able to access credit-bearing first-year courses in the majority of Nebraska post-secondary institutions. Once again, likely and majority because finding one score that fits for everything was not possible. So those definitions, one other thing that we want to mention, academics aren't all that students need. We know that. Everybody is well aware of this. And so we're working on additional information because these are juniors that are taking this test. We don't want any student to say, "Oh, I'm on track. I'm at the ACT benchmark," and say, "I don't have to do anything my senior year." We know that that's a bad idea, right, all the way around? That taking rigorous coursework makes students better able to, to be successful in college, whether they're already at the benchmark or whether they're still approaching the benchmark. And so we're working on other things that we can tell students and parents and districts about things that you should continue to do to increase the likelihood that you're successful, not only in post-secondary institution, but in, in life after high school in general. And so this is just one thing that I'd mentioned, that we're working on, not only those definitions and how that information, but information in general that goes out to parents and to districts around this piece as well. Go ahead and show you this. This is information that we gathered since last month. And, and really one of the impetus for wanting to, to wait on this a little bit. So this is information from Nebraska institutions about how they use ACT scores for place, for course placement. It's not about whether they let the students in or not, but it's about how they use ACT for course placement. And these are the scores that they require in order to take first-year credit-bearing courses. Any, any numbers below those that are listed would require some level of remedial or developmental course or courses in order to take credit-bearing courses. And so as you can see, if you look down the math column and just look at the community colleges, 17, 17, 18, 19, 19 there, there is not a consistent score that works for that. And so we had to interpret this and say, "What is the score that we want to put forth for this?" You'll notice that the state colleges have different scores, and then even the, the universities don't have different scores. One thing that I'll mention about that, we put "not used" in there, that means they don't use ACT score. That doesn't mean they don't use some other method to determine that. UNL, for example, doesn't use ACT scores for course placement. They have their own placement exams that UNL students take in order to determine what courses their students can take in related fields. So those are really, I wanted to put those out there for you so you could see some of the information that we were working with in making this recommendation. So the recommendations, so like I said, with a benchmark, ACT benchmark, on track and developing, meets expectations, does not meet expectations, what those scores are, 18 in math, 18 in ELA. One thing that I'll mention about that is, we used that information on the previous slide from the post-secondary institutions and came up with 18 and 18 for our recommendation. When we went back to the work that the, the panelists and the committee did this summer, those were the exact recommendations that they made for both of those. So the panelists' work that, that they did and the information from the post-secondary institutions really verified each other. Verified that we're right where we need to be. One thing with science that I'll mention is that it's a little bit harder for science because nobody is using science, ACT science scores to determine course placement. They might be using it to determine access to a program or something like that. But as far as whether students need developmental or remedial classes, they're not using that. So we used impact information to help us determine where that should be. And so this is the commissioner's recommendation that we are bringing to you. That we use the 2022, 23 for the ACT benchmark cuts and the 18, 18, and 19 for the on-track cuts.
Questions from board members. Rachel.
Well, I'd like to thank Valerie, you and Jeremy for all the work that you did. It was a pleasure to serve on the committee and, and clearly, it was probably like herding cats. That might even have been nice. And, and I think you really captured the guiding themes that emerged. And the guiding themes that emerged were the fact that parents get a report from ACT that says something. How do we make sure our report doesn't contradict or confuse a report that parents are getting, and this doesn't? It gives that ACT benchmark. But also, we had a lot of discussion around, these are juniors, these are juniors that are still evolving. This is not their senior-level score, it's their junior-level score. And how do we understand the element of access? We had lots of discussion, and I think you're capturing the on-track, really captured that discussion around access. So I think this really creates a framework that parents and students and schools can understand. I also really appreciate the recommendations that you gave that are important to remember. We need to make the most out of the senior year. I think that's the messaging that, that we can't lose sight of, is that this is an ACT taken at a junior level in their beginning early second semester. They still have time in their junior year and their full senior year to really impact and improve what their post-high school direction may be. So thank you for all the work that you did. I know how difficult it was in pulling all that together and, and being able to make a recommendation, I think, is the Nebraska way. So thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. I think you captured our committee meeting very well. Thank you. Lisa?
I again want to thank you because this was tough decision-making. But what I really appreciated was that you listened to the input from the, the group that met and also stayed true to the academic side of the ACT. And I think this is greatly appreciated because each of the school districts that I had mentioned before all wanted to go with the recommendation from this summer, you know, what we came up with. And luckily, it turned out exactly as the committee decided for on-track. So I thank you for having been true to the ACT excellence and then also the excellence for the kids that are going into careers military. I, I appreciate that. And also, we talked about this morning, the idea of communicating that if a student has a goal of wanting to be an engineer, you know, don't be complacent because you need higher than. And then they have that time that Rachel talked about to get to where they need to be if they want to be an engineer and any of the STEM work. So thank you both very much. Appreciate it.
Molly.
First of all, I want to thank you for all this work. I think it's exciting. One question. Earlier today, we were talking about the front end of things, kids being ready to read by third grade. And we need to provide intervention support where appropriate. Now, as a mother of five kids, I think about my children going to college. I get the ACT score, whether it's made the benchmark or on-track or developing. And I'm just curious, did your committee talk about what we can do to provide intervention support after the junior year, during the senior year, as a guideline? support after the junior year, during the senior year, as a guideline for schools so those students can be actively involved in some sort of development or remediation their senior year and be able to pay for credit-bearing classes then when they graduate if they choose to go to college?
So, we were starting to have those conversations. That additional information that we talked about is really trying to do some of that. And I know, so, I'll go back to the conversations that we had this summer with the counselors and the people, because they were really looking at this with a lens of, how do we help students once we get this information back? Because really, and obviously, we could always, as a department, we could always help do supports for that, but really, it's those counselors, those people that are helping students plan for the future that need to do a lot of that work. And I think, I think we need to continue to think about how we support them in doing that work and figuring out, you know, I think back to my time when I was in teaching high school English, and that we had seniors that we gave remedial reading courses to because they weren't ready to do what they needed to do. And that was a powerful thing because they, at the time, we were taking the compass, right? Students were taking the compass. I had a student that was told that he had to take two remedial courses before he was going to be able to take credit-bearing courses. We actually worked with that student, and they took the compass again at the end of the year, and he was able to get into that 100-level course without it. And so, hoping, hoping schools understand that and support students that have goals is hugely important, and I think we need to continue to have those conversations as a department about how we do the support.
I also would like to say, they were really adamant about what the level that was the "not" meets would be named because they wanted to be encouraging in that nomenclature, and they brought that up several times. So, I thought there was a great emphasis in that committee work about that this wasn't the end, there's the senior year, and that we're doing things in schools that make a difference once we get those ACT scores, and we are working to provide guidance for that.
And the other thing I'll say about it is, I know a lot of schools are thinking about pre-ACT and those types of things to make sure that they're even more ahead of the game, that they're not, they're not getting the information at the end of their junior year, that they're getting the information either sooner or later.
And I have to say this, the kids got to keep their ACT online prep all the way through December. And I just want to emphasize, that's not like a test-taking tool, like practice, practice a test. It gives them instructional pieces inside there. It shows them which of the items, the strands they are stronger and weaker on, and it explains how to do the problems, so they have all those things. It has flashcards for learning vocabulary, and the students who took this test, ACT as juniors for which are setting the benchmarks, had that available to them all the way through December of this year, and we have been very open with schools and are encouraging them to encourage our students to open that up and to go in and continue to use it. So, the product that you included in your vote with the contract continues to serve our students, and you reminded me of that, and I had to say that.
I just want to add to that. Thank you so much, Valerie, for bringing that back up because that was such an important value-added process in the purchase of ACT. If you, if you think about, it's beyond a test. It really did include those resources, and the ability to keep those resources going is another really critical piece and nice value-added piece for schools and for families. So, for schools and families that sometimes were spending money on their own for, quote, "test prep," have a free resource that really maybe helps build some of those skills. So, yeah.
Anyone else? John?
Just want to thank the committee. They did an outstanding job. I meant, I was unfortunately not able to be part of the committee, but I was just, if you will, in awe of the work that you were doing, all the hard work. Maybe I didn't understand a lot of it, but you guys did, and that's what counted. But I must say that on our travels across the district, I often ask, "Tell me about what you think about these ACT cut scores. What do you think? Where would you go with them? If you were in our shoes, state shoes, where would you go?" And they said, "You can do no wrong if you go ahead and follow the recommendations from that workshop conference that you had this summer in the past." They said that that's what we'd like to see. Thank you.
With that being said, the committee recommends authorizing the commissioner to set the cut scores for ACT at tomorrow's board meeting. And just so you know, I will not be here, and I've asked Lisa to carry the heavy load of putting forth the motions tomorrow. And Madam President, this concludes the Teaching and Learning Domain Committee Report. And thank you, Jeremy and Valerie.
Thank you, Maureen, and thank you guys. Lots of hard work. Okay, Molly, will you please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting?
Yes, well, we had an exciting meeting, not to extend again that Maureen's committee seems to...
It's tough to beat ours.
Yes, but we did have two exciting reports. I just want to share briefly with you. We are so lucky. Commissioner Bloomstead, as in Rita, is just amazing. And if you haven't met her, she is just a sparkle of life. She was talking about this team nutrition, this USDA grant, and we're number two out of a three-year grant, and it's, it's really promoting healthy lifestyles, not just diet, nutrition, but exercise. And she also told us a kind of a cool thing about social eating. I don't know if you realize that a lot of kids just eat fast food and aren't really at a family dinner table all the time, and she was saying how that's such an important part of nutrition, that it's a time to actually have conversations and etiquette, and it just puts a whole positive spin on it. But we're really lucky to have her and her team, and Diane Stumer does a wonderful job with the federal laws. Now, the other thing that came up is Rule 15 and its guide for implementation. This is about the education of students with limited English proficiency, and they're changing that name again. It's not LEP anymore. They're calling it ELNS, English Learners, or English Language Learners. And in the next coming months, we'll bring to you a timeline and potential changes to Rule 15. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Okay. I will go ahead to three point... Sorry. I will go ahead to 3.3 and report on the Policy Committee meeting. We have four action items that will be coming before you. The first one is to approve the provisions, revisions to State Board Policy P, which is now a position statement on contracts, grants, and purchases. And Shane, do you want to address that?
Good afternoon. Shane Ryan, Financial Services Director. During the course of some review of grants, we were looking at the policy on board approval of contracts and grants and felt that we needed to suggest adjusting that language so it would include all grants and all contracts over $50,000. And it is largely just a housekeeping measure.
Okay. Any questions? John?
Just a brief comment, Shane, in regards to the reason we're changing this is because the value, the standard has been raised to $50,000 versus the old 25. Is that correct?
We did raise the threshold that required board approval from 25 to $50,000. This just clarifies that all grants and all contracts over $50,000 would go in front of the board for their approval, and those below that threshold would be at the discretion of the commissioner and would be reported to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this will be brought before the board tomorrow, and the committee recommends approval. Our second was to approve the new State Board Position Statement S11, which is a position statement for Nebraska digital education. This new position statement has several important components that include defining digital education, making sure it supports the development and implementation of the statewide systems of quality digital education in Nebraska, support the quality of infrastructure broadband access, industry use of technology and data, and ensures privacy and security of student information, and supports the creation of a statewide digital learning and educational technology plan that achieves priorities of the state school board's strategic plan and direction. So, this is a new policy. We, because of technology and all of these things, wanted it to be a broad policy that is flexible so that as technology changes and the other things that we're doing, we don't have to go back every few months and do that. And the committee does recommend approval at the business meeting. Do you have any questions?
I do, Madam Chair.
Sure.
And I may have to, like, see if I can get to the document too and the notes on this whole process, but I started channeling Glenn Flint. So...
Oh, my.
We really didn't add an element about personal learning or competency-based learning in this. We did for, now, let me see if I can get the document open, for professional personal learning, but not as it relates to student. So, I think that we're missing one little element of a concept around the personal learning for students. So, I don't know that I have a real great suggestion for what the language should be, but it didn't pop that we have a bullet around personal learning or competency-based learning.
Cory, do you want to go, go back to Dean and the people that put this together and talk with them about that, and then we can, can discuss it and see if it isn't as substantive?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's got the digital learning facility by, to give students some element of control over time, place, path, and/or pace. I guess when I was looking at it, I, I think it, it, the bullets up front are the bullets that pop, and I think that's an important bullet to pop, is that personalization, and I think it could pop in a couple of ways, not to take away from what's there.
Well, I'm going to ask Cory if they'll kind of go back and read that again, and it's not, it's, it's not that we're changing anything, it's just, yeah, more emphasis or whatever. So, let, let them talk about it, and we'll see what comes up then for tomorrow.
And Cory was very involved in our study committee, so I guess maybe that would be the piece, and thinking back on some of those recommendations from the study committee on whether or not we really captured that personalized learning, competency-based learning.
Molly?
If you look at the fourth bullet, allow all learners to achieve their fullest potential in transitioning through phases of school and into civic life, I think I really like that bullet point, and that might be the place to increase that, again, personalized learning plan of that student, because that's what it is, and people are going to just laugh, but it's really that digital backpack that follows the mobile child through life, through school, into job. And this, I like it, it's general enough that it can be varied according to local plans. But I would agree, if there could just be a few more things about, not just student engagement, but the student owning their own planning and owning their own information as they transition into careers.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, we'll have them look at it, and then we'll bring it.
So, my, my recommendation, just on what we might do, is, well, go back and maybe propose something tomorrow. Then if you aren't ready to adopt it yet, if you still want something, I would recommend you send it back to committee to do that work, because otherwise, it gets a little bit difficult in this format to do that. We can go back and look, and then tomorrow, when we have that discussion item, you can decide whether or not you want to send it back, and I think that will work just fine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number three, which is approve a new State Board Position Statement on Assessment of Student Learning. Cory, do you have anything you want to say about that? This is, as you know, we moved to position statements, and instead of what we used to call General Ed, I believe, I don't know, we keep renaming things, but we have a statement, a general statement on standards, and this is a general statement on, it just reiterates the idea of assessment for learning in all content areas at all grade levels, and we recommend approval of this statement. Questions? And we also recommend approved position, proposed revisions to State Policy P11. And now, this is a policy statement, and this is giving direction to staff as to how we handle data access and use. The proposed revisions of this current policy describes, number one, how NDE staff should handle personally identifiable information regarding students that we possess and come into contact with. And number two, added regulatory and statutory citations to make it more complete. Number three, references to individuals outside of the K-12 environment, such as other programs in the vocational rehabilitation program, including DDS and ATP, and adds language from the Nebraska Legislature that if FERPA or other state laws permit educational entities to share with one another personal identifiable information, they should, and reference NDE Rule Six, Regulations and Standards for Uniform Sharing of Student Data, Records, and Information. So, this goes to what can be shared, and we brought in, Mark Schultz came in and spoke directly about the things that are required in disability and bulk rehab, and so those things were added, and making sure that, that our students are covered with, with privacy when, when it is necessary. But there are, there are also places that information can be shared for research purposes and, and things like that, so, and we recommend approval of this policy. Is any questions? Molly?
I just had a clarifying question. Are students that are, are removed from their school district and go to Carney or Geneva, those are our, our school district, they're under our purview, so the data would follow the student there without any problem, right?
Right. So, underneath our system, number one, schools are reporting when they move between schools. So, if they're in a, if they're in a public school setting, and as soon as they're entering into that, they, they have their unique student ID assigned, and so if they're moving into, into, for instance, YRTC, they actually become the student of, of that particular school as well, but that's still underneath our purview. You approve them as schools in Nebraska as well. So, one of the things, I mean, on that, and the data sharing and all this gets complex when you start to look at the policy, this is aligned with the laws, your rules, everything else, but this gives us a chance to look through how we guide what other statements you want to have, and I think those very points, we've heard before, hey, look, make sure that, that we can do, do our due diligence in ensuring that that data is actually with that student, that we're able to use that data to the advantage of that student.
Again, to provide intervention and support too. I think that when I look about expulsions and suspensions and taken away from your home camp, it's so important, not just feeding the student, but continuing that growth in a pathway to success.
Any other questions? Yeah?
Not a question. I just think it's nice that, since we've gone through the strategic planning process, we now are incorporating VR in Mark's area and our policies and what we're doing, and realize that they're a major part of the State Department of Education.
Thank you. Good point. Okay, we had two discussion items. We'll be discussing the expanded learning opportunities, and this may be brought back as an action item in October. And we are also recommending a new position statement be written as a model policy on Senator Vargas's statute that was brought forth on the educational success of pregnant and parenting students, and that will be brought back in October. Anything else? Okay. Okay, let's see, I, we're going to do a real quick, Rachel, and then we will take a break.
All right. Put Rachel as in the legislative committee, please. Or were you reading my notes on extended learning that I thought I'd just share with you later? Okay. Well, the legislative committee met today and we had no action items. We did have a discussion item, an ongoing discussion item. And I want to thank Brian and Frida, Sharon, Melody, and Steve for their work. Our last meeting, we asked for some input on how we look at reading and math interventions as it relates to a variety of rules. So we took a look at some proposed down-the-road language in Rule 10, Rule 11, Rule 24, and Rule 51 that, yeah, we were busy. And staff was very busy. And they gave some great recommendations of how in some of our rules, maybe we weren't explicit in the need for intervention in reading and math. And so they really went through those key rules and looked at some proposed language change to make sure we communicate the importance of interventions in reading and math across the board. That led to some great discussions also on how we look at things such as 504 plans in our schools and some proposed changes in that. Next month, we'll continue that discussion. Staff will come back with some additional cross-reference discussions around Rule 10 and Rule 51 on how we cross student assistance processes and multi-tiered systems of support between Rule 10 and Rule 51. We then also had a general discussion on ESU services and accreditation and just kind of got a historical understanding of ESUs and the Rule 84 accreditation process for ESUs. Anything else from the committee? I think that was it. Brian?
Hey. As I said, we'll take a short break.
We'll take a short break and be back in about 10 minutes, please. We're coming back into session now. And we will move to 3.5, the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee. We have one action item, to authorize the commissioner to submit to the Secretary of Education a consolidated state plan for Nebraska under the Every Student Succeeds Act. And Dr. Bloomsted?
Yeah. First of all, thanks to the committee for the discussion this morning. I want to walk you through just kind of really briefly, a very brief overview of the elements of the plan, and then talk a little bit about where we've been since the August board meeting. Number one, the SAA plan itself obviously is describing how we're going to use federal funds in the future. And that's the design of the particular plan. And how we go about doing that is somewhat scripted in the sense that there's a template in which we have to fill out and address certain things. But the sections that the U.S. Department of Ed and within the law itself say that we need to address is long-term goals. That's the first section of the plan. Second section is really consultation and performance management, really the feedback from stakeholders. The third section is about standards and assessments for English learners, that focus on how we'll embed that information. Section four, which would I call kind of a substantial portion of it, is really built around the accountability support and improvement of schools. And kind of what I would call kind of the meat of the plan is within that particular section. The fifth section is really supporting effective educators and how we, in particular, we use Title II funds to be able to accomplish that work. And then ultimately, supporting all students and how we provide a well-rounded education. So that's the real brief outline of the elements within the plan. And you've seen the details that go along with that in the various drafts that we've had. Since the board meeting in August, we obviously had the opportunity to have direct conversations with the governor. And I'll go into that for just a little bit. But underneath the law itself, it says that, hey, look, every state should give the governor 30 days for a review. We started that process officially, actually before that, we started back in July with conversations with the governor's staff and actually a meeting with the governor in the middle of July, and then offered the draft of the plan that we reviewed back in August. The plan, as we started working on that and thinking about those conversations, the governor provided us some feedback and his staff did. And I will, I want to compliment Cheryl Wolf on her, her working with us and working with Ryan and our team to kind of figure out what are the areas of concerns and what are the types of things that we might be able to address. And I know, I will tell you- might be able to address. And I know, I will tell you, we still work on those just a little bit yet today. I presented earlier to the committee kind of the areas in which we had conversations with the Governor around consultation, and we also talked this morning around our consultation work with the tribal leaders in the state as well, and I might ask, I'll do a little bit, and Rachel can fill in some of the voids when I present that, because she did that work herself, and I think that's quite important. In our work with the Governor, there were about three or four different things that the Governor asked us to take a little deeper look at. The first of those being long-term goals. And if you remember the draft that we reviewed back in, I'm gonna lose track of time, but basically back in June and into the summer, we had a section of the particular set of goals that actually tried to extend that type of methodology out 20 years. And the feedback from the board itself said, hey, look, I don't know if, I think that's too far. We can be, we could take a little different approach, and the approach at the 10-year timeframe was viewed as sufficient with some additional aspirational statements by the board saying, hey, look, ultimately, we want to move to a close and eliminate ultimately the achievement gap. But within ESAA itself, the guidance is that we have achievable, ambitious and achievable goals, right? That we're talking about what we can reasonably accomplish and how we would get that done. Well, the Governor, and a very good conversation with the Governor around long-term goals as well, asking, he in particular was asking, well, how are you gonna move the dial on these students in this timeframe? How are you gonna accomplish that? Plus, he threw out the term "stretch goals," which I thought was very consistent with where we wanted to be as far as, we don't want to put a cap on it, we ultimately want to eliminate that gap. So we're exchanging information and back and forth a little bit on what a paragraph or two that wouldn't necessarily substantially change the overall goals as we set them, but include a process in which we would review those long-term goals, and we would commit to doing that. By the way, not only commit to doing that, but also working with our other partners, including the Governor, to talk about how are we making progress on that? How are we moving that forward? And I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable ask and a good thing to include in the conversation. A second one was, a second point the Governor made was, and I think the phrase or the term that was used, well, how do you ensure there's teeth in the accountability, right? How do you ensure that there's something that you can act on? And we had a good conversation again about how we use rule, how we use law, how we use that in Nebraska. And one of the things I would say is that, in a conversation we had, that we can't write things into this particular plan and substitute for doing actually our real work, which happens to be in rural ten, rural ten, or happens to be in statute on certain occasions where we need that work to be accomplished. So what we're recommending of writing into the consultation plan is simply a statement of recognition of, hey, look, that is work that we will continue to be able to do. I don't believe those things, you can't write them into ESAA. They don't suddenly have the force and effect of law across the whole system of education. It would only have some force on how we spend those particular funds, and I think that balancing act is really an important one. But we're most powerful when we use the system that's established in the Constitution of the state of Nebraska, that we actually take our responsibilities in that sense, and we had, I think, a good understanding of that. I think the other part on accountability, we're actually, you know, what's, and it's within the statute itself, what's an alternate administrative structure, right? That is actually a term that's defined in statute King through LB438, and I'm not like Brian, I can't cite all the statute numbers to you, but the reality within that, that particular meaning of that language is something not yet further defined by the State Board. I would actually say maybe that's something that we would continue to work on within rule, because we would have the ability to interpret what that statute would further mean. Here's why we've not. That language only applies to a priority school that's been a priority school for at least five years and not come off of a plan. That would be if they aren't making the progress that the State Board would expect, what's that next step, right? And that was language that was put into statute at that point in time, and I think that's, we're not at that point with a particular priority school, but I think we need to be in a conversation about where we would take that, and what that might look like. And I don't know if that looks like, you know, you remove a principal or not, I don't know that we have that authority under the statute, but there's some way in which we know leadership makes a difference ultimately in turning around schools and performance, and I think figuring out what that would look like is something the Governor would have an interest in having further dialogue with us on. All I'm saying is basically in our consultation that we would recognize that in the conversations with the Governor as work that we have to do, but I think that's work that we have to do in Nebraska rendered, Nebraska rules and laws. The, kind of the final point that we had some discussion over, and it's no surprise to any of you, but I've had multiple conversations with the Governor about saying, well, what about A through F ratings? And we dived into that, and I said, hey, look, we've come up with a naming function around that, we're building this on Aquest. But really, when we dive into that conversation just a little bit more, it's this notion of how do you engage parents and stakeholders in a conversation about where schools are at? And I'm very committed to making sure that our structures actually do that and inform, inform the public and inform parents about the types of things in which they can come in. We're asking them to be supportive in improving schools. Every student in Nebraska deserves to have a school that is providing them what they need to be successful. I know that you all believe in that, I certainly believe in that, and we want a system that helps us do that. So we continue to build on that system, but I'm very committed to that. We actually shared some things about the Nebraska education profile, how we do reporting, what the cycles of that reporting happen to be, how that comes together, and it was, again, a very good conversation. So we'll give credence both to the, all those different conversations and points within Section Two of this plan, plus in a couple other places, I think it's quite fine that we would add some of that dialogue into the plan and would feel comfortable doing that. I don't, I think it doesn't change the impact or the direction necessarily of the plan, but I think it does impact how we think about the relationships with those necessary partners. I feel the same way about our tribal consultations, quite frankly, and I think it's fair to say that, like many other, many other stakeholder groups, finding ways to include parents, by the way, as Patrick points out often, how we engage with them better. And I think that the experience of working directly, and we've had that wonderful opportunity and to learn a lot from the priority school setting in Santee, but these are tough scenarios. And then there's a structure in which I think every Nebraskan, this is probably what Rachel was, every Nebraskan really needs to understand the role of tribal leaders and the responsibilities for the education of their children, as well as the locally elected boards that serve them. And I think, again, ESAA has given us that opportunity to dive in and start those conversations in a meaningful way. There's hard conversations to be had, but I think, again, what we're writing into the plan from the consultation with tribal leaders is we're committed to that ongoing conversation of bridging connections between the school districts and the tribal leaders, that we're committed to be a player in those conversations of facilitating that. And so I want to make sure that that comes through in the plan in final form. Otherwise, the rest of the plan, I think, is very much in the content that we need for the future. We've watched a lot of the other state plans come along. I will say this, because I think it's quite appropriate, the week after we, the last state board meeting, I had a phone call from Secretary DeVos, really just simply asking, how is the plan coming along? It was really a very friendly ask of, they were kind of changing how they were handling the review of particular plans. Later, I had an opportunity to speak with the acting Secretary for ESEA, Under-Secretary for ESEA or Assistant Secretary for ESEA, Jason Botell, about where we're at in that process, kind of what we're doing. Had the opportunity to ask for, you know, additional questions, mostly around process and procedure things, but have appreciated those outreaches as well. And I, you know, again, this is, the ESAA Plan is not the totality of our work, right? It's one element of it. I think, I think when you come back, this is within the work of our strategic plan, within the work of what we've done on Aquest, within the system of education that's designed in law and rule. And for us to continue to own that, take that responsibility, which I know we had those conversations at that moment in time, that's what we're doing. I feel comfortable with where we're at. I will ask that you allow me a little bit of kind of tweaking and editing in the conversations, especially with the Governor right now. Over the next couple of days, I believe he has to be heading out of the country, so we are under a time crunch and working with him. But continue to do that, continue to thank Cheryl Wolf for her efforts on facilitating those conversations, and that's not as easy as it sounds at all, because you gotta get the right people in the right room. But I'm proud of this work, proud of our team's work. I gotta recognize Ryan for what he's done in kind of, in the middle of this, picking this up and being the one to make sure it's coming across. We have lots of other folks, I'm not gonna go through the list, because I guarantee you I will miss too many people, but I think, I think it does a good job of implementing the elements of the strategic plan that you envisioned, and really thank you for your ongoing support of that effort overall. Do you want to add anything, Rachel?
No, I think you've covered it well. I just wanna thank, I have not had a chance to meet with representatives from Santee, but I want to thank the Winnebago and Omaha Tribal Council for taking some time and giving some great thought and recommendations for what they believe are important elements for the education of Native American youth in Nebraska. And so, again, I think those are important pieces in a conversation that was important to have, and I was just very fortunate to be able to have it.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that, reaching out to that particular community. And I know there are other communities along the way that we will also need to reach out to as we move forward with what we're doing in Nebraska. Do any board members have any questions to the Commissioner?
Just like, just one statement from me. Commissioner, I understand there's a provision in the plan, if you will, continuous improvement. So even if the plan is signed and forwarded, we still have the opportunity to move forward with changes, recommendations, and so forth. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, that's very much correct. And I think we've also tried to write the plan in the spirit of taking the opportunities that are allowed underneath the law, so you can continue to make decisions about the direction for the education system in Nebraska, and not pinning us down in a way that we can't improve on that particular work. And I think that's really important.
Thank you.
Lisa?
I hope this, I can't tell if that thing's on. I hope this won't happen, but in the case that they turn it down for some reason, how much time do you and the staff have to correct whatever might need to be changed?
So by law, the US Department of Ed has to respond within 120 days, right? What they've done and what I've been told they do, not just by others, but also by Assistant Secretary Botell, his, his point is, we'll get you that information, a lot of, we tried to highlight, you know, we're trying to pay attention to the other places that have had sticking points on that, so we ask specific questions. One of the actual sticking points, I'll just highlight one, just to show how I think our response to it's important. For instance, science, because in the law, the ESAA law itself, it doesn't specifically call science an academic indicator, and yet, we obviously believe that that's an academic indicator. Some other states tried to force it into that, that location, and consider it an academic indicator, and had a battle over that, when actually, their real guidance back to the states and the real recognition of that is, hey, look, and we're using a kind of a group-together analysis, kind of composite scores of different things in part of what we do, but we can actually separate that out, include it as another indicator, and then we won't have a back and forth about it. They're comfortable with that, and it doesn't change our underlying calculation of how we're doing that. So it's really just more of a way to ensure that the law is being followed, and they don't feel that they have any authority to go outside of the law, they're just checking to make sure that the law is followed. And knowing that is quite helpful. The early states that presented that didn't quite have that same, that same exchange. So we're in an advantage in the sense that we've learned from some of those other experiences.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we had one discussion item, which was the processes and timelines with Aquest, and as the Commissioner said, this is a part of our plan, our strategic plan, and Aquest. So Gail, do you want to bring us up to date just a little bit?
Hi, I'm Gail Hamilton, Director of Accountability, and I wanted to give you a quick update on where we are with the classification cycle. Back in 2015, we established our first classification using the Aquest model, and as you know, we ended up with our three priority schools from that. And so we are at that point in time where aligned with our ESAA Plan, we have indicated every three years, we will have a reclassification of our schools. And it doesn't preclude you later, as Commissioner has said, we have some flexibility, it doesn't preclude you later from changing that from three to two or one, however you might want to do that. But we are at this point where we'll be reclassifying. The reclassification of schools has to take into account any changes that you've made in testing along the way, like our ACT test, we have the ALPA 21, we also have the English Language Learning Test, I should say, and then also the, the new English test that we put into place. So those are changes that are made that create changes within your accountability system, your business model. I kind of equate it to a golf course having a par three and changing it and making it a par five, and so you have to change your pars, then it must be a par five, but you're gonna be in a lot of trouble, or I would be, Rachel maybe wouldn't. You'll need to change how you assess schools, and because you've changed your model. And so we'll be in the process of doing that, and putting together a timeline for how that might work. We'll also be putting together a timeline for how these new additions, additional indicators such as chronic absenteeism might fit into the EBA, as well as this new classification system. But with that, are there any questions?
Any questions? This is beginning the work in process and progress of the changes that we need to be, need to be made, and staff will keep us updated as to how those changes are going. Okay. John, please report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask for a motion to authorize the Commissioner to approve a contract, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, contract with Iowa Vocational Repalpation Services, IVRS, for the expansion of Career Pathways Advancement Program into the geographical areas of Iowa that surround Nebraska. And did you want to add anything more?
Be glad to answer any questions.
Is there any questions?
Hi. Thank you. I'm new to the board, and I keep reading more and more, and the more I read, sometimes the more I don't get what I read. But this sounds like a great thing. And how did this come about? Is this just a collaboration to work together using federal money? And how does that improve the pool of helping students? I think, like, their top three missions to collaboratively work.
Okay, sure. Two years ago, we had applied for and received a federal demonstration grant and created this Career Pathway Advancement Program. So just to briefly overview, what we're doing is going back and contacting former VR clients that we successfully placed in some targeted industry sectors, so transportation, distribution, logistics, manufacturing, and now like information technology. And so we're going back and asking them, would you like to advance in your career pathway? And if you would, we will provide you with support, whether it be the cost of schooling, transportation, et cetera, whatever you need in order to go back to school to get that certification, credential, or degree, and be eligible to advance then within the same business. So it's a win-win for the business and the individual. And it's unique to Nebraska, no other VR program is doing it. And as a part of the federal grant, we said in the third year, we, and we worked with Iowa, and they were partnering with us on this, so we included money in that federal budget to provide to Iowa the ability to replicate that program. So we're working with them now to set up a structure that will do exactly what we're doing here in Nebraska, and then contact former Iowa VR clients, and then bring them back and provide them with the support they need to advance in their careers. So we're doing this as a demonstration project and replicating it in the hopes that the federal program will see this in the benefit and create a national initiative around this career advancement program.
Wow. I'm glad I asked the questions. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. That's all we got. Thank you, sir. Next, we're gonna have a discussion item. Authorize the Commissioner to submit to the Department's Deficit Budget Request Authorize the Commissioner to submit to the department's deficit budget request in Nebraska Budget Request and Reporting System. What we have is in regards to the board will be asked to approve a deficit items at the next meeting. The first two are required under statute and the last three are at a request that the board needs to approve on. And if there's any questions, we have Bryson Schane in the back to be more than happy to answer any questions. See you none. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, John. Okay, we will move on to four. And under four, we have an ESUCC presentation. And Commissioner, would you like to introduce our guest?
I will. And first of all, thanks to Dave Ludwig for being here. Dave is the Director of the ESU Coordinating Council. My successor, I guess, is what I could say underneath that. But I know that you also had an ESUCC meeting just yesterday and today, and so they drove in from Kearney, so I suspect they're, if they flew in from Kearney, their arms would be tired. So I don't know what it is if you drive in from Kearney. But, and then Dan Schnoz, and I think you're both coming up, right? So go ahead and come on up. Is there anything you guys need in particular? Or we got their PowerPoint ready all right? So it really is good. And I know that the state board's connections with ESUs are largely in the, so in the policy arena, we have regular partnerships and activities going on. I know we had a couple of staff out there for their meeting today and yesterday, and there's some other activities we do throughout the year, but I'll turn it over to Dave and thank you for being here.
You bet. I appreciate the invite and appreciate being here, sharing what we do within the ESU Coordinating Council. Now, I've been an educator for 35 years, an administrator for 31. So what's intriguing about my career is, and all of ours, is that at the stage we're in right now, we have more dialogue going on in education now than we ever have, which is tremendous. The challenge is, this is the most dialogue we've had in education. So how do we communicate that? How do we work together with each other? And how do we share resources, funds, and so on to make all these great things happen for the students that we serve collectively? So that's going to be our theme today. And also, communication awareness has been our legislative goal for the past several years, especially with the way funding, budget shortfalls have been. So how do we change, not ignore budget shortfalls, tax reform, but how do we stay focused on what it is we do collectively and stay focused on needs? And then the last part of it is how do we enhance the communication with what we have going on as well? So the crux of our conversation is, and the PowerPoint that we have is, kind of based upon what we've been doing, some of the presentations we've had. But I had a great opportunity to visit with Mrs. Tim out at Admin Days for a good hour, hour and a half, and Jeff West from ESU 13 was able to be a part of that conversation as well. So for me, it was a great opportunity to know and understand what it is, what it is you guys know, and what we need to do better to not just tell you, but to educate you as well. Remember, our roots are teachers, so we can't just tell. We need to teach what we're doing. That's part of what we do. So Dan, you want to give an overview of your role? Introduce yourself, Dan.
I'm Dan Schnoz. I'm the Chief Administrator at ESU 3. I'm starting my fourth year. Former Superintendent and Principal for a number of years in the state of Nebraska. And so I'm here just to talk about, a little bit about life as ESUs and use us as an example. However, all of us, all of us as ESUs are really working together hand in hand with Dave's leadership. And we like working with NDE, and I think we're one of the few states that has a great relationship with their Department of Ed, and we really like that moving forward. So thank you for allowing us to speak today.
Right. And along with what Dan just said, at our state executive meetings that we have, we meet once a month, what I find interesting is some of the issues, some of the concerns, some of the struggles we collectively may have. Other states aren't even positioned to have this relationship, to dream about the concerns, the issues, and the things that we might be dealing with, that might be struggles. So that's a great opportunity. My colleagues, other colleagues, they don't have the relationship with their Department of Ed that we do. So I'm glad you pointed that out. So anyway, as we go on to the next slide here, when we talk about the statewide system of support, when we talk about we, I brought them both up here collectively, the Nebraska Department of Ed and ESUCC. What we have been talking about within the ESU Coordinating Council is in reference to all of us sitting in this room. We're part of that K-12 system of support. And as we continue to work with that, remember, the ESUCC is comprised of all the 17 different ESUs. The 17 ESU administrators are what makes up our board. So as we work together, how do we continue to provide the leadership for the 17 ESUs, serving 244 districts, employing the 22,000 teachers, but most importantly, educating 315,000 students we have in the state? So that's what we need to keep in mind and constantly preference that. And when we look at the demographics within the state as far as students and where they're located, we have 315,000 students in the state, and the message we keep sending is, we have, we serve between ESU 3 and Papillion and ESU 19 at OPS. We provide services for 42% of our student population. When we couple that with ESU 18, LPS, that's 55% of our student population. And when you draw a line out even a little bit farther from ESU 7 in Columbus East and South, in the southeast corner of the state, we serve 71% of our students. So how do we provide those same efficiencies, equity, access to students 350 miles west of us? So we need to keep that in mind as we continue to collectively work together. So within the educational service units, this print is getting smaller. Okay, anyway, we were, ESUs have been in place for a little over 50 years. And the process behind that was through LB 308, but that was to create then 19 ESUs to help serve resourcefully, better serve the students that we have in Nebraska, to provide the supplementary services that we have. And I'm listing some of them there. And I'm not going to read all of this to you, but again, just to provide an overview. If you look at some of those services we provided then, 50 some years ago, some of these are still intact. And through the strategic planning process that we're so happy you guys put together and some other areas, how do we provide a better direction with what we're doing? Then approximately, we'll look at efficiencies. Approximately 12 years ago, we had 19, but the ESUs 12 and 14 merged into ESU 13. So we continue to look at that statewide system of support. This is something that everyone here in this room would know, but the key words there are leading and supporting. So how does that relate to what we are doing collectively? Leading and supporting. If you look at the state statute with LB 603, that was the statute that created the ESU Coordinating Council to provide back in July of 2008. And the emphasis behind that, if you look at what's in print there, is to provide statewide coordination, our strategic planning for cost-effective, cost-efficient, and most important, equitable delivery of services. So when the ESU coordinating was, council was started, Matt, you can probably talk about that, the road you had to pave to get us where we are today. It wasn't an easy process. And a year after that was implemented, I began my career at ESU 2 in Fremont. So coming into not knowing all the nuances of what ESUs were about and the system of support, we had some great discussions to begin the process of pulling everything together to be resourceful and again, focusing on equitable delivery of services. So if you look at leading and supporting, equity, efficiency, effectiveness, those are things that we do collectively here. But again, statewide initiatives, statewide coordination. So then when we look at PDO, that's the ESU Professional Development Organization. If you think of an umbrella, the ESUs are there with all the different affiliates that are underneath that, from staff development to network operations to technology with teaching and learning with technology, as well as the special ed, the special populations as well. But several years ago, Matt, I can't remember, did we do this when you were in my role or did we start it? I think we had some beginnings of the discussions when you were in my position. But what is the purpose of, what's the vision for PDO? For the professional organization? What is it something that, what is it that we can all grasp onto as far as the direction we're going? Again, that's comprised of all the different affiliates, but most importantly, anything we're doing, we make sure there's an NDE connection. The PDO is included with all of us, NDE representatives and so on. So if you look at again, leaders, leading and supporting with NDE, cost-efficient effectiveness, equitable delivery, now visionary leadership, it all seems to flow together, what we do collectively for 315,000 students. Want to take this one?
I can talk about this one. If you look up at the screen, you'll notice all the ESUs there, and you'll see there's different colors. Those people that are in the, with the black color have been with their ESUs for quite a while. So we've had quite a turnover in ESU leadership. The ones in the green, I'm starting my fourth year, so those three came on. Just this past year, we had everybody in the red, so you can see there's six different names. So we are in quite a transition of leadership across all of our ESUs. And bringing that is a whole new set of ideas, a whole new set of expectations, a whole new sharing of our vision of ESUs and what we can do moving forward. And we're pretty excited about the new people that we have on board that have the opportunity to not only work together, but work with our school districts across the state.
So if you look at this, in the past, we have six new administrators this year, one last year and three years ago when Dan first started. We have a total of 10 new administrators within the past three years out of 17. So now's the time to create, continue to move ahead with planning, tying what in what we're doing collectively here. Okay? When you look at the infrastructure of ESUCC, this is where Matt really had to pave the road for what we are doing today. And I do want to preface that when, in my earlier years, when I started in this role, I would introduce myself to some people that just still getting to know, and some were making reference to not knowing what ESUCC was all about or never heard of ESUCC. As soon as I mentioned I replaced our current Commissioner in that role, then it was a clear understanding what we did. So I thought I'd make that. So don't get a big head about that one.
What are you going with this?
Anyway, as far as the ESU infrastructure at the top, again, it's the ESUCC. By statute, it's the 17 ESUs. Within that, we have seven different committees. Now, when Matt was in his last year, prior to that, our board meetings would last one day. We tried to get everything done in one day, and that was exhausting. And you can, you guys know what that would be like. So we divided that into, been there, yeah. We had committees, but we were purposeful through Matt's leadership here and then Dennis Poole at OPS to create a two-day system similar to what you have now. So the committees, for instance, yesterday for us, met yesterday to go through specific agenda items, coming back today with the entire board for review and updates, similar to what you do. And we also have any ad hoc committees that come up, and then I would fall within that. Underneath that, we have the ESUCC staff, which we have an FTE 10.6, and that was all pulled together from all the different initiatives, projects, and so on, that each ESU had pulled into the fiscal management within the Coordinating Council, again, to help facilitate the coordination and the resourcefulness of all the different projects that we had going on in the state. Matt, do you have anything else to add with that?
I would just add that at that point in time, if you remember, before there was the ESU Coordinating Council, there was a lot of shared activities, but they had no official structure. And so when the legislature said you will have an official structure, I got to be that first one. And I remember my first official duty was responding to a state auditor question. And then we went through multiple, and I would tell you that was difficult. By the way, I think there were only three administrators left that actually hired me in that role at ESUCC, I think, from when I looked at that list. But it was fairly intense, and there were projects all over the place. And so the CC's intent was to be able to centralize and talk about strategically where that needed to go. So yeah, I would just highlight that.
Right, right. And then when you look at the project initiative staff, this is where we begin to make more connections with NDE. Making sure that every project initiative affiliate and so on has a connection and a membership from a staff at NDE to make sure we're enhancing that level of communication. As we continue on with the flow chart, we have four different projects or categories we're working with, PD, cooperative purchasing, SRS, and then the Blend Ed. Within that then, we also have, under professional development, the PDO, NWA, which now we're have greater demands and direction is with what we're going there. Underneath the professional development are the different affiliates that I mentioned before. You'll see it's a little bit different here, but when you look at some of the Blend Ed initiatives with distance ed, instructional materials and Blend Ed, we now have, instead of TAG, IMAT, and then the distance ed, we combine those into a teaching and learning with technology, TLT. The reason for that being, we noticed the agenda items were pretty similar. We needed to make better connections because there were some silo effects happening within those three affiliates. And the membership was pretty identical as well. So the charge for each of the committees then is how can we pull things together into one that's going to be more productive, resourceful, and then moving forward within the same direction. So that's how, at that time, we came up, about two years ago, we came up with teaching and learning with technology. So the governance structure, we're still working out, but we're having more rich conversations regarding students and the scope of work we need to be doing. You want to talk about this one? Okay. When you look at the next sequence, talks about the communication and the means of communication that we started with the initial process with the ESUCC and continuing on with this. When I was at ESU 2, we sat in this very, this very room discussing with NDE staff led by Matt as far as reviewing of Rule 84. At that time, the rule was not reviewed until, I think it was back in 1998 was the last time that rule was reviewed, and it hadn't made no mention of the ESU Coordinating Council, let alone the level of accountability and so on. So that was our charge to review and then come up with recommendations to make it more inclusive of what it is we're doing and the better direction as far as what we're going to be doing to move forward. So part of that rule change, and again, this is something we probably need to revisit again, something we've been discussing within the Coordinating Council, is in Section 3 as far as the communication. Every ESU administrator with, during a meeting with NDE, twice a year, we schedule a meeting, the strategic planning meeting, to talk about focus, necessary core services, and so on. And at the first meeting we had, our first planning meeting, I thought was very productive. And Matt, you can add on to it as well, but the focus areas that we came up with at that time was Blend Ed, data, which is the advisor dashboard right now, and the teacher principal evaluation, or educator effectiveness. And in my entire career, I don't ever remember a time where we collectively sat down through a full day process and the six different groups that we had all came up with the same needs. So it was pretty enlightening and I felt it was pretty focused on what we came up with at that time, without having a lot of data for us available. Matt, do you have anything else to add with that? Okay. So that's one means of communication that we have set aside, and it's mandated every ESU administrator or his or her designated participates in those planning sessions. We have our first one coming up this year in October, October 4th, and then we also have our second one in April of each year. So how do things happen within the Coordinating Council? It doesn't happen by accident. It happens through a systemic approach for communication and make sure it's purposeful, tied to data, research, and it's based on a foundation of an identified need. I'm not going to go through this. It's an 11-step process, I guess shy of being 12, but what ends up happening is an idea comes to me and it flows through the different affiliates, which NDE has representation, and the process continues through the ESU Coordinating Council to the committee and so on until final approval is made. It takes quite some time to get approval of this, but when you're talking about a statewide approach, including NDE, we need to make sure the system is vetted, the idea is vetted to make sure we have a good direction as to what we're going. But just to give you an idea of the communication process we have established with that, as far as any additional planning processes, strategic alignment, perhaps one of the best things that, not only from me, but I hear others talking about as well, is the strategic plan. We now really commend you for the work that you guys have done there, and it gives us all something to hang on to and stay focused as far as the direction we're doing. As far as strategic alignment, our AESA, which is the Association for Educational Service Agencies, our national office, they went through a redesign process two summers ago, led by Joan Wade, our new director at that time. We had her in in January just to talk about the redesign process and how can we begin to make connections with, at the national office. When we talked about then with the strategic plan, there's several different things that we've been talking about. One is, how do we align ourselves with the AESA redesign process? How do we talk about our own redesign process, which would be inclusive of, in some format, with NDE being a part of that as well? We've been around for 50 years. We know where we've been, where we're going for the next 50 years. That's the second phase of that. The third phase- The third phase is, and this is one thing the board decided to stay focused on and develop a process right away, is the strategic plan. So how do we begin to help unpack that? How do we begin to support the strategic plan of what we're doing? Okay, and then the last part of it is, as I said, is talking about a redesign process. We talked about it yesterday and today, and that's something that we're just still discussing, develop a process to moving forward with that. We have Susan Lettich who helped with the national redesign process. I have her supported with some outside funding to come in to help us through that process as well. Okay, so we're looking at, again, where are we going and where, what are we collectively going to be doing together? Do you have anything else to add to that? Okay? Okay, that wasn't it. All right, and that's again, within the redesign process, I'm talking about Rule eighty-four, as I alluded to earlier. That's something we need to revisit. It's been almost five years now, five years. So we need to revisit that, but also within that, what we've been talking about, no decisions have been made yet. But within Rule eighty-four, it talks about core services and it's also listed in state statute as well. Does that definition that was developed quite a long time ago define what we're doing today? If not, that's something we need to revisit and revisit and possibly revise as we go here. So those are some of the different planning processes and the strategic alignment that we're, that we've been talking about for quite some time. Again, focusing on the strategic plan first. And that's where we have, since January, purposeful in our planning with having Russ Masco and Janine Tyler attending our CC meetings as well to give us updates and to keep us informed. Okay? Okay, as far as scheduled communication, this was one thing, as visiting Pat, when you and I spoke out at Admin Days, we just kind of take for granted the process we have in place, but again, it's something as far as that communication awareness, we need to keep letting everyone more informed of what we're doing. We have weekly Monday chats with between NDE and CC. We have Russ Masco, Janine Tyler, Gail Hamilton, well, he was here, Gail Hamilton. And then Lane Carr, also a part of that conversation. Again, just to develop the conversation, what it is we need to begin helping understand the strategic plan more, ESSA and so on. Okay, we meet, we, every Monday morning, there might be a couple more Mondays, we have conflicts, but that's our goal. Notes are taken and we just, constant direction of where we're going. That's one means of that. Technology review, for lack of a better term, but for quite some time now, Dean Folkers, Scott Isaacson, who's our technology director within the Coordinating Council, and I meet. Now it's, we try, really try meeting twice a month as far as reviewing technology, the support system that we need to continue to work together regarding resources, funding, and just making sure we're on the same page and how can we, it goes back to the LR two sixty-four study, when we're talking about all the different resources, the money that's spent, and how do we align our work to make sure we're providing those efficiencies throughout the state. Okay, another means is within the innovative grant that we have, we have, we meet twice a month with Lane Carr, Scott Isaacson, Beth Covish, who's our blended ed director, Deb Herricks, my administrative assistant, NROC staff, and then the RMC group out of Colorado helps us with the evaluation piece. Again, to stay updated as far as reviewing what's going on in the innovative grant and constant reviewing and adjusting what we need to do to make sure we're moving forward with that process. And Lane does a great job with, it's fun having him onboard with that as far as the communication. Yep, the NDE ESUCC connections, again, as I alluded to earlier, we're making a concerted effort to make sure any project, affiliate, initiative and so on that we, that we have, make sure there's representation with between both the department and the ESU Coordinating Council. Again, just to enhance communication. And then ESUCC meetings, in the past, we, we always have had a line item as far as NDE agenda items within our board meetings. But we're being more purposeful now because of the strategic, the strategic plan with ESSA and so on, to make sure we're well-informed and we can provide any support necessary to make sure those plans are carried out and supported. So with that said, since January, we have Janine Tyler and Russ Masco attending. And we're fortunate enough today to have Gail Hamilton attend as well. So I talked to Lane Carr, Dean Folkers about attending some of the meetings. In fact, Dean, in our professional development meeting yesterday was able to attend. And it's just nice to have that communication, the dialogue with NDE present as well. Okay, and then, then the last one is what we've been talking about. Again, as I alluded to earlier, in my thirty-five-year career, we've had so much dialogue. The concern is communication. How do we make sure everyone's informed? That's been my number one concern and emphasis is how do we develop a systemic approach for communication? Visiting with Janine, with Russ on a weekly basis, sharing these ideas with the Coordinating Council. This is a draft of what we came up, and Matt, have you guys talked about this? Okay, this is something through NDE, through their assistance. I think your department was the one that actually drew this model up, but what this is? You did that? I don't see any crayon marks or anything. Right, right, but the, but the idea behind this, this process, this communication model is to ensure there's two-way communication back and forth. Not only with what NDE is doing, but also what we're doing and how does that, how do we keep making those connections, the networking and those, developing those relationships as well. So we just started this process last week where, whereby NDE put together, staff put together some talking points. I think one of the talking points was the CCSI process. For the life of me, I can't even remember what that acronym stands for right now. Anyway, you?
It's another committee.
It's another committee. Anyway, but that was one of the talking points. So what, what the process is designed to do is, once those talking points are received, I send those to the ESUCC body a week prior to our board meeting so they can read, reflect, and then develop a little bit better of understanding going into the board meeting. Going into the board meeting then, Russ and Janine are available. Today, Gail Hamilton was available as well to bring about clarity in the entire process. Now again, this is something we've never done, so what was intriguing is the goal that I had envisioned was to create a level of communication. We had that, because we had some rich dialogue, starting today about the, at the process, the strategic plan, CCSI. So I thought it was very beneficial. But again, from here then, the ESU administrators will visit with their staff about this, get feedback, input from them. There's a Google form that feedback can be integrated into and it goes right back to NDE. If we have connections where might be some of the projects we're doing, we can provide that direct feedback to Russ and Janine. They'll put that together to share with your leadership team and the process just continues. Again, we just started this process. By no means is it perfect, but it's a process that, you know, that's been initiated and it's going to fun to see, it's going to be fun to see how this will evolve and grow over time. So, anything else to add with that? Okay, and then when Matt started as commissioner, I started in this role again. How do we describe what's happening, the work that's being done within Coordinating Council efforts and with NDE? Listing several different things, one of the first things through Matt's vision here is identifying specific categories that defines, that defines the work that we are, could be, or will be doing collectively together. So again, this is just an MOU, no contract or anything, but this is all a part of the, our communication and awareness of what we're doing. For instance, if you look at the advisor, the advisor part of it, that's something we're doing collectively. That's a good example of what we're doing. So special education and so on. Continuous improvement, there's all these different things we're working on, but again, it's communication. Okay, as far as communication between ESUCC and the seventeen ESUs, we have a master services agreement. And this was something that was started pretty much at the onset of the Coordinating Council. But it lists the different activities that we do collectively, that we provide for all the ESUs, from professional development to NWEA. Again, that's going to take on a different, little different vision there, but it's still part of it. Blended learning, all the different components with that, co-op purchasing, special education. And, and those are some of the different things that were all part of the master services agreement. When we look at communication then, within the state, within and between NDE, we also have communication that's going on with other states as well. One of the initiatives that, or one of the connections we've been, began to make four or five years ago was working with the, trying to bring in single sign-on and the portal system and so on. Was quite difficult because all of us, because of budget cuts, we've had, our, we've never had all the resources we would like to have. But trying to make the best of what we had to develop single sign-on and so on. But a group of technicians, network operation people within the state, different ESUs, attended a meeting out in California, came back with some great conversation, dialogue from what a consortium within Illinois had been doing. And through their conversations, the included, why are we doing the same thing, but doing it individually? Why can't we do it collectively? We met with what's called the Align iCloud. Again, it's thirty-five school districts, about the size of the state of Nebraska. Keep in mind, there's eight hundred districts in Illinois. But this is just a section of what, portion of what we're doing here. But through that conversation, through that dialogue, we had that come to the ESU Coordinating Council and with legal council help, we were able to provide a, an agreement as far as how can we continue to work together and move together and, and help each other out. For instance, with single sign-on, again, some of our struggles, they were about two years ahead of us. What ended up happening then through an agreement, they were able, able to provide us and share with us the research and development they had and turned for some extra funds to help further development on the portal system. Because they were struggling to make, to move forward on that. So that's how we collectively were able to move on the single sign-on, the portal system and so on. Probably a year ago, we maybe had sixty at best school districts that were connected with a single sign-on. And today we have two hundred and twenty-four. Simply because of, one, the communication and the process, the relationship we have not only with the Align iCloud, but the cooperative spirit and the collaborative efforts with our network operations committee to make sure that's flowing and working, not just from the technology director within the Coordinating Council, but everyone's participating and making sure that happens through a model that they created. That's one means. And also with that, there is, after seeing what some of the work we were doing, and we have Dean Folkers also a part of that as well, which has been intriguing because all the other states that we've been working with, they don't have that relationship. So Dean is the only Department of Education person there. And that's where the, the conversation started to evolve, is how does that happen? How do you get the Department of Education there with you? Well, it doesn't happen by accident. It happens by, through purposeful planning. But since then, we've had other, some other agencies from other states that had an interest. So we put, so we have the Align iCloud, which is a consortium in, in Illinois, state of Nebraska, between NDE, ESUCC. We also have a resource information center in New Jersey, about the size, a little bit smaller than the state of Nebraska, and then Clark County schools have had an interest. So through some grant development through the Align iCloud, we were able to put together a grant to help begin to develop what's called a K-12 federation. And what that is, and we're by no means complete, but what that means is how do we develop a system by K-12, for K-12 that we're, we're sharing resources, assets and so on to help each other out with what we're doing, similar to what we were doing with the Align iCloud? How can we put that, involve that into a broader scale? Okay, some other multi-state areas is within the, some of the dialogue we've had within the past month with my counterpart within Iowa, Brett Seagrest, and we've had, we were expressing some needs at some state leadership meetings, but also with the development of, and support for, for instance, ESU boards and also regionally within ESUs. Is there a way that we can provide some training, some, a conference for ESAs or educational service agencies with Nebraska and Iowa? Have them scheduled in Nebraska and, or in Omaha and Council Plus as well. Where again, we're just in the very initial dialogue phases of that. But is there a way we can provide better support and leadership for the ESU boards? But not only for the ESU board of directors, but also for the rest of the staff as well? And again, to create that networking, those, and the communication collaboration process, not just with us, but with other states. So that gives you some idea of what we're trying to do to reach out. As far as the innovative grant, there's five different components here. And again, we meet on, twice a month with this. The first component is technology infrastructure. I'm just going to give you a very short overview of that. Again, this is through conversations that the weekly, or the conversations that Scott and I and Dean had had. And a part of this is developing a technology infrastructure governed by policies that develops a seamless flow of data to and from all the tools and resources that we collectively have within the state. And we're working on that as we speak. How do we continue to advance and develop AAP? That's Academic Achievement Plan. That's for the facility-based schools. SRS for students within IAP. How do we continue to develop that? But then more importantly, how do we make sure data flows seamlessly to and from? The next two areas, blended ed has been a statewide initiative since two thousand and twelve. We now have resources to begin, begin to scale that process up. And then again, integration with advisor as well as Ed Ready. Have a process in place and the resources now to move forward of scaling that up. And then again, any data we have, how does that flow seamlessly to and from advisor? And then the last component is simple. We have another acronym. Service Implementation Matrix Planning Log. This is something, okay, so when I come back in about two minutes, I'll ask you guys what that, do you remember what that means? But anyway, what this, what this entails, Larry Ann Polk out of ESU seven approximately three years ago, saw the need to be more purposeful in their planning for program of services and making sure when she visits with her superintendent advisory council, to make sure they're purposeful in their planning, doing more of a data dig, and it builds in an accountability piece as well. That's something she shared out with the ESU Coordinating Council a couple of years ago, and then we've been having some dialogues since then. And now we have five different ESUs that are piloting that process. We have five additional ESUs that are involved now in the process of further developing of what could this look like? Basically, in a sense, it's accountability piece, but it's also a means of communicating with all the different services that we provide in, within the state. And this has been coming up more and more in superintendent meetings. I think one of our, your superintendent advisory meetings, one superintendent asked, how do we know what different services are provided in the state? This will be one way, once developed, we'll have easy access to that. So again, more, this is all based upon the simple process. Remember what that means? Anyway, okay, it's, it's accountability piece and reporting piece for all the different services that we have. And then plus, that'll be a good resource for ESU administrators to observe. ESU three is providing this service. Is that something I should begin looking at out of ESU thirteen? So it's going to provide more connections, more collaboration, more awareness of what others are doing and see what we need to do collectively. Do you have anything else to add with that? Okay, so where have we been? If you look at, when Matt was starting this process through PDO, we have three PDO planning meetings a year, three PDO events a year in September, January, and in May. They're two-to-three day events with staff and administrators coming to the events for staff development. If you look at the themes we've had back then, from two thousand and nine, creativity, collaboration, creativity, communication, learner engagement, to as we continue to evolve, systemic collaboration, systems thinking. And that was where we really started to make connections, I think, Matt, when, as far as trying to get away from the silo effect of every different affiliate, every different ESU doing their own, or rather developing a system of support collectively. Increased integration of statewide resources, again, what do we have that to make sure we're being resourceful? Statewide initiative projects, and then this last year, we had Jim Nide for instructional coaching. That just gives you an overview of what we've been doing. And the more data we can get through the simple process, that's going to help drive what we do for PDO planning. As far as relationships, we're talking about program of services. That's a process that each ESU works collaboratively with their member districts as far as determining their local needs, determining how core services dollars are spent, determining how tax levy dollars are spent as well. So Dan, you want to take this one?
First of all, does anybody have any questions? We've been, I should say Dave's been covering a lot of information here from a very big overview of all the things we do. Kind of almost sounds like that's all we're ever involved in, is just meetings and collaboration. But there are a lot of very good things that we're doing. So questions?
Just a comment because as Dave said, we had quite a chat at Administrator Days. And in your very first part of your presentation, you said, you know, your purpose was to lead and support learning, earning and living. And amazingly enough, our mission statement says, And amazingly enough, our mission statement says, to lead and support the preparation of all Nebraskans for learning, earning and living.
Right, that is your, that was your.
Yes, and that makes me feel very comfortable.
Yep, and.
But. The relationship that you're building with staff here at the relation, at the department. I think is incredibly important because as you listed, the number of people that aren't there anymore. There's a lot of relationships that aren't there because they're new, they're new people. And we've got new people too, so, you know, but I think that's going to help our consistency. And stability in, in working together and making, making more collective decisions that benefit what we're doing. And so, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Lisa. A while ago, there was a state, I don't know if it was legislative or some leaders wanted to do with E, away with ESUs. I don't remember if you remember that.
Yeah, I do.
But I kind of went, not ballistic, but close.
Right.
Because did some lobbying to make sure that, you know, they understood that this was a good way. Of collaborating and get things and helping schools. And so, I love that you said, how do we provide a better direction? And you've got this going, and I hope you keep thinking about that all the time for improvement. And you have eight schools, two of them are within thirty-one miles, four are within forty-seven miles, and then two are within ninety miles. Of each other, so to consider in the future, maybe where, give an example, Holdridge and Carney. Where they might be in expertise area in one thing, and Carney is centered on another. And collaborating, since they're so close, to share resources, it sounds like that might be a way you're going. Then you have Fremont and Columbus that are within forty-seven miles, and then you have two, I can't remember, that are within ninety miles. I just see where it would save money and be great where you, you share expertise, is that in the future?
Part of what we, yeah, that's, and that's kind of what we're talking about right now, when we had our professional development planning committee this summer. There's a group that approached me about a process called Learning Forward, and what that is, it's a way to help organize and provide more structure. Common language with professional development, I had. That group present to the PDO planning committee at that time, which Russ, Janine and a few others from NDE were a part of. But we had representatives from, which Chad Dumas from Hastings Public attend, and we also had Scott Bloom from Waverly. And what was intriguing, that's something that's always been, how do we get, how do we get school districts actively engaged with what we're doing? That was one example, today for the board meeting we had out in Carney, again, we did a presentation, I had asked to do, have them do a presentation for the board as a whole. And again, we had Eileen Barks from ESU two, but Chad, also led by Chad Dumas and Scott Bloom as well to help lead that, again, making connections. And one of the things that came to my mind right away when, and when we were in Carney in June discussing planning for PDO and what direction we're going. I had a list of things that we collectively are doing, I had about eight or nine different things that we're, that we're doing. And how do we make those connections with school districts, how do we make those connections with the issues, with NDE as well? When we're, and Chad knows I use him as an example, but when those were listed up there, I had, he was part of the presentation. And I asked him about some of those areas that were listed on the overhead, on the, geez, an overhead, on the, on the screen. And he just went down the line, he goes, don't know, don't know, don't care, maybe, yeah, we do that, don't have a clue. So it was clear to me, we need to make more active engagement as far as getting school districts involved. What we've been doing for the past several years is to help build, and maybe you can attest to that as well, but help build that. That relationship within us first before we can send that out to schools, we're at that point now where we're able to begin making those transitions. And with the Learning Forward project as just but one example, whether we decide to move forward with that or not. But that's an example of how we're getting, trying to get school districts actively engaged.
I'm excited that you are going in that direction because there's so much more, especially in the third district. You know, where ESU three is, it's ten minutes from my house, you know, it's wonderful, I love going there for different things. But sometimes the long distances in the third district, there's so much more that can be done as ESUs coordinate and get to be. More on the same page moving in the same direction for all schools, so thank you for that.
I would agree, another example would be Future Ready, that's a process that Dean Fulker's been leading. Of the Development of Nebraska Future Ready process, and school districts are represented, ESUs are represented. And I believe even higher educations there as well, so again, how do we get, this is a great, another example of trying to get everybody on the same page. So we're being resourceful. NADA, there's a group called NADA that I was unaware of till about a little over a year, year and a half ago. I was made aware of that through Mike Delaney at NCSA, NADA is the Nebraska Association for Technology Administrators. Had no idea that existed, but that's the large school technology directors that got together. Simply because they realized their needs and some of the issues. With them being the largest by far district in a, in an ESU, their needs are different than their, their member districts in that ESU, so they. Still were part of the issue, but they joined their own forces as well, until they realized, as one of them indicated to me at that first meeting. We can't possibly do this by ourselves, so how are we, how can we collaboratively work together to get them more actively engaged? To use their expertise, their knowledge base, their skills, their resources and so on, to help develop that system of support that we're collectively doing.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions here, and then we're going to go back and let Dan finish up what he was doing, and then we'll go from there, okay?
Okay.
Rachel?
And, and I have a long list of questions, so I'll try to kind of put a few together. And talk about, you know, I mentioned earlier in our report from our legislative committee, we had a discussion about ESUs. And I appreciate a lot of things that you've shared, yet what I didn't hear that's really important from my view. Are things that, that you mentioned but didn't expand on, I didn't hear anything about consumer satisfaction. So I appreciate you recognizing the third district, but from a person in the third district with five different ESUs. I've heard different viewpoints about what I would say is a part of the quality of services provided throughout the region. And so I think as we think about how do we move forward? How do we understand in a statewide system that's tied to regional processes? If those regional services are meeting the needs of their consumers, of their school districts within the area? How do we think about where we need to go over the next fifty years? We've talked about where we've been the past fifty years, but what's the model really moving forward for the next fifty years? How do we think about a process that looks at, are there changes that need to be made from a statutory or regulatory process? Where currently maybe the statutory or regulatory process has limitations? And maybe is, is not designed to, to help this process of accountability. Quality and accountability, delivery of services across the state. You know, there's some things around, you mentioned the equitable delivery of service, and I would say that's probably what I hear the most is a feeling of inequity. In services throughout the state from various ESUs, and I think there's a lot of reasons for that, I think it's more complicated than. Just where that ESU happens to be, I think there's probably funding elements, there's maybe limited resources and personnel. So I guess it's, it's a time where I think that, that we need to better understand ESUs. If, if we are going to be an advocate for ESUs and understand the important relationship that the ESUs have to the Department of Education. Then maybe this is a time to really take a good look at ESUs, what are the strengths? And I think you've done a great job in mapping out a lot of the strengths, what are the areas of improvement? What are the areas of needs that really can help us move, move forward? How do we differentiate between two ESUs that are single district ESUs? How, you know, we've done some things in the past for compromise for a variety of issues. But are we really meeting the needs of today's schools? From a geographic perspective, from a service perspective? You know, I think that's an important conversation for us to have. How we have that and who else had that conversation, we don't know, our legislative committee has had a conversation about it. Today, and so your timing is perfect to talk about the kinds of things.
Well, and Rachel, as, as you listed those many, many questions.
I just wanted to put out the conversation so you're aware.
Well, and I think that's one of the things that, that David and I talked about this summer was, and David has mentioned it several times. In his report today, that it is time for us to sit down with them. And review Rule eighty-four, and I think everybody's agreeable to that, and I think that's, those questions are the ones that need to be. Talked about when we do that. And I, I don't know whether we can answer all of them today.
Right, and, and part of that with, with what I shared here and been sharing with the council for the past six months, nine months, since January. Is a six-step process, and we're starting, and the first process was with the state board strategic plan, and the next process is ESU redesign. But the six-step process again is how do we align ourselves with the AESA redesign, that's our national office, the national. The Association for Educational Services Agencies, how do we align ourselves with that? And so doing then, how do we go, we need to go through a redesign process within the ESUs. And that's one thing we talked about yesterday, we talked about today, and we need to get the same, we have the same person, Susan Lettich coming in. That again, I have outside support to help fund that, to come in to help us through our process, as she was the person that was involved in, and helped facilitate the national design as well. The third step then is the strategic plan, which we have Janine and Russ involved in the ESU CC board meetings. And which I think is going to be a very tremendous asset for us to help bridge that communication, not just to a point of, here's, here's the NDE agenda item. Report and then you can leave, but it now is more purposeful, they're part of it, they're there, they're staying for the whole thing, so they can listen and hear. What's happening and provide that, again, another means of communication. Lost my train of thought, oh, the fourth, fourth phase would be, again, Rule eighty-four revisiting that, and I believe, I know Matt and I, we've been talking about that as well. We need to revisit that, along with that core services, the definition for that, that would make some changes, but that's what we've been discussing as well. Again, does it define that decades, that plural old definition, does that define what we're doing today? I would imagine it doesn't, and then the sixth step that I want to talk about and have been sharing with the coordinating council, talked, in fact, I think we met, we met last week about the same thing, but. The last phase then, as, as each ESU has a process to define program of services using data. For services, getting feedback from their constituents, how can we do the same thing at the state level as well, to have a statewide program of services model? For all the different services that we provide, so it's a six-step process that is going to take time, but we're having discussions. And we're leading more into that redesign process as well. Okay?
John, I'll let you ask your question, and then we'll let Dan finish up, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you very much, as you well know, we're going to be doing some heavy lifting really quick in regards to ESSA. I'd just like to know, are you involved in our plan, our ESSA state plan in regards to implementing?
Well, what, what, again, the purpose of having Russ and Janine present at our CC meetings is to talk about the strategic plan and ESSA. And the talking points that they're putting out will reflect the work that is going on with that, to how do we, how do we help support that work going on with ESSA?
Okay, one other question I have is, as Dan knows, I'm very familiar with ESU three. But in regards to the, I like to use the term, military terms, command and control of the ESUs. In regards to like a school district has a superintendent that calls the shots for the, for the various schools. Do you, as the ESU CC head, do you call the shots for the seventeen ESUs?
I'm in service, coordinating council would be the board, the seventeen ESUs, the administrators.
When you say coordinate council, I mean, do you, can you actually direct ESUs to do certain missions or functions?
That, that, no, I, I'm more the service support and so on, I don't have, I don't believe I have the.
So in other words, there's not one?
Right, right.
So John, let me, let me add to that, it would be very similar to my, having my eighteen superintendents be part of my advisory group, so I work alongside them. I don't oversee any of the districts, they are my advisory group, but we share that information out, so, it's similar.
Yeah, the process for me at this level with the seventeen ESUs is to listen here and help lead in what direction we're going, for instance, that six-step process. The same would hold true with like what Dan just said with, with their member districts.
Now, is the levies, correct me if I'm wrong, what is the levy?
A cent and a half.
Cent and a half, that's what I thought.
And as far as core funds, we have six ESUs now that are non-equalized.
Okay.
So, so that's why we need, it's more important than ever to be resourceful and how do we work together to use resources wisely?
I know the future is going to be in regards to equity for a lot of our schools that are in need, and it seems like the ESUs are going to be, have a big chunk of that responsibility.
Right.
Especially when it comes to resources and services and so forth. Thank you.
You bet.
Dan, do you want to?
Sure, if we could go back to the slide, the one that we were on, and Rachel, I think this will help answer a few of your questions, but you, you have great questions in there. And something you mentioned earlier, and one of the other topics that I want to bring back because it fits perfectly into this slide. Is that we, we value our local control of our school districts, making those decisions they need to have. And we need to be able to, and if you see under program of services, we need to be, have a, a good ability to come in, listen in here, but also to lead. John will know that when I was hired to come into ESU three, when I asked the board what would be my key direction, they said. Sometimes we feel like in the past, and I, and maybe some other ESUs have had that, that we became a little more reactive than proactive. And so my board said, it's time for you to be out on the cutting edge and the leading edge along with your school districts. I asked the same question to my superintendents, and you know what, I got the same answer. We expect you to be on the leading edge with all of us. And those are the kind of conversations we're having all across the state. One of our charges in our advanced continuous improvement visit that became just a year and a half ago was to. Better develop a, an evaluation of our program services for all of our districts. So we're undertaking that right now, so we can answer that question, are we providing the services that we need? ESU three is unique, just like all the other service units across the state, they have great staff, they have great talents. We need to be able to tap in, like Lisa said, we need to tap into those, those talents all across the state, so we're not recreating the wheel all the time. But, but in ESU three, we have, we have, have one of the greatest diversities of school districts. We have a school district of three hundred and twenty-five, several in the three hundred, four hundred, five hundred range. And then we have in the five thousands, the ten thousands and twenty-three thousand. So when you talk about meeting all their unique needs, that's where we really have to get in and listen to what they have. And so you'll see a couple of steps down there is, what do, how do we determine what their local district needs are? And that starts with developing good relationships, not only with our peers in other ESUs, but across all of our districts. So being a, a new person into ESU three, I had the luxury of, of working as a superintendent with a number of those superintendents before I came on. It was very helpful, but I, I have a different relationship now with all of them because of the position I'm in. And so when we go out and work with our districts, and I'm going to use ESU three as an example. Because all of our ESUs do something similar to this, Dave mentioned the simple process, the first step of the simple process is good planning. And, and working alongside your districts, and that's where those relationships come in. And so we develop what we call our personalized district service plans. We don't have a, a program to say, okay, all eighteen, you need to fit this program. We all ask our eighteen districts, what do you need? And then we go back and say, what programs do we have that'll fit it? And if we need to develop a new one or build one for them, that's what we set charge to do. And, and that's part of what we think about being on the cutting edge. At the same time, we need to be able to ask that question, are we being efficient, are we being supportive? Are we, are we taking care of the needs of the districts? And we do, and, and we have to do things like triage. We had one of our districts lost their district technology director on the first day of school. And they were implementing a one-to-one with brand-new computers in their high school. We get the call, can you come help? We had four or five people drop what they're doing and go. Those are kind of some of the examples that we do, if you look at, I put a handout on there, and this is just, and I don't want to feel like I'm just. Tooting the horn of ESU three, because every ESU administrator could come in and do the same presentation. tooting the horn of ESU three, because every ESU administrator could come in and do the same presentation and talk about all kinds of great, unique programs and things that they offer. But when you even look at technology, so if you look down a little bit at the data networking box, it was about three years ago when I started, when they were talking about how much internet bandwidth do we need to buy? So in ESU three, all the internet services comes through our building. We help our districts set up the content filtering, we help, but we help monitor how much bandwidth. And so we buy it in a bulk package. And we've worked now at Network Nebraska to keep those costs as low as we can. Interesting enough, a year ago, you could take Memorial Stadium, fill it with ninety thousand people, give them all a device, and that's what could hit our network every day. And we think this year, when we do our device survey, it'll go over a hundred thousand. So we need to be able to react and actually be more proactive in working with our districts in those areas, not only providing and help with a lot of the technology services they're doing. On the left side, you'll see professional learning. We're trying to be, you know, old-school thought, and I know some of you are in that same age category as I am, you know, there's some old-school things that just really work well. And they still do today, they're still great practices. And so those things we have to honor and keep. There's some old-school things that just needed to go away. And you know what? We need to help ourselves and we need to help our school districts recognize that there's just some things that we need to move beyond. Even though this is really important to us, you know, we felt this back in junior high, we felt this when we were twenty, but it might not be there today. And so we try to really work and customize all the work that we're doing in our professional development. We have, we have fewer trainings in our building now probably than we ever have because we're targeting our people to be out in the school districts when classes are going on, to be working with the teachers in their classrooms where we need to. And so there's a whole different change in focus. And those are the conversations that we're having at the ESU-CC level that we're sharing in our professional development organization, that we're trying to share those ideas. And some of those ideas we're implementing are things that we've learned from colleagues across the state. And so even though it seems like, boy, do all you guys ever do is meet? Well, we do, but we try to really make those meetings be effective. And our staff will tell us, hey, look, that wasn't really worth our time. And that's, and that's great. We want honesty because that means we have to change and do something better. And it's the same thing with our school districts, those relationships. I want a superintendent to call me and say, you guys need to do a better job. And so part of our visits that we do, and almost everybody does, visits annually or more than once out to their school districts. So some of those questions that we're now very pointed in asking their teams are, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing to help you? And so that every one of our districts, from a Weeping Water who's three hundred and some kids to Millard is twenty-three thousand, are we meeting your needs? And so we're trying to challenge ourselves to do a much better job with that.
This is.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, this has been a conversation that we've been wanting to have for quite a while, and it's an outstanding conversation. Unfortunately, we're getting real close to five o'clock. We've got a couple of other things to do. I know that we've got more questions. I know people have more questions. But I'm thinking maybe we can perhaps have another meeting in a different format, that we have that opportunity to really have that conversation that we've been wanting to have. And it's not that I don't want to do it now, but tomorrow we've got things that we need to do too. And I'd like to finish pushing through if everybody's okay, and you can kind of wrap it up.
Yeah, just, just, just a quick summary of the program of services. Rachel, going back to your question, do we get feedback? Part of the program, the emphasis of the program of services is just that, to get feedback. When I began at ESU two, I had to work hard to move from a sit-and-get to an interactive environment, to listen and hear what the superintendent's needs were, what the district's needs were, to provide what they, to provide what they were requesting. For instance, we needed more services for Level Three programming. So through a year, year and a half process, we were able to implement our own program school collaboratively through the efforts of Framah and other member districts as well, to put together a program of support. But through accreditation process that we had with Advanced Ed at that time, and plus with our own process, we did perceptual surveys for teachers, for principals, for superintendents, and so on, to give us constant feedback. So again, that has been happening. And again, the superintendent advisory meetings are one that provides just that, to give us opportunity of, tell us what we're doing, what do we need to do differently?
And if I could add one piece, and I know a couple people were at, we held a behavior health summit for schools, and several of you were there. We are continuing to get very good feedback from that. This, we think, from listening to our superintendents and many of our ESUs, is going to be one of our next biggest challenges out there, is how are we dealing with an increase of issues with school mental health issues?
Oh, absolutely.
And there, the school districts are coming to us to say, what can you do to help with this situation? And so we're going to continue working in that direction. But you will see probably more of this topic through our ESUs and our school districts in the future.
But that's based on an express need from ESU three all the way out to ESU thirteen.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for the conversation.
You bet. Thank you for inviting us.
This has been a good conversation, and this isn't the end of it.
Right.
We will, we will find a time that we can move forward. And as Rachel has asked, let's talk about our next steps. And I think that's very important, so thanks, guys.
Thank you again.
We'd be glad to come back.
Yep.
Okay, we are going to, what we have now, I think we can get through. Tomorrow, we have two presentations that are ten minutes, plus we are anticipating some people coming in for public comment again. And so I want to make sure that we have plenty of time tomorrow during our business meeting to address those issues. This is where we talk about meeting participation. I know that the NASB areaship meeting, area membership meetings have started. And most of yours are already over, Molly. Did you have any ahas while you were there?
I would just really encourage, when you go to your local area meetings, to listen. And they're talking a lot of the same conversations that we are. They still are really encouraging alignment with serving, supporting, and intervening on the behavioral and mental health issues. But the overriding theme, I kind of, I'll just make this brief, but they really were talking how the resources of Nebraska have been flatlined. And because of that, the investment in K-12 is still good, but higher ed is really down. And when the ESU is talking about behavioral health, they were saying how they really are begging for more accredited behavioral health specialists. So that was huge. And then the only other thing is, they were saying, if we intervene early and have support early, it'll decrease the expenditures for incarceration and Medicaid.
Absolutely. Thank you, Molly. We also, quite a few of us went to the program at Sheldon yesterday with the Early Childhood Report from the Buffett Foundation, or the Early Child Commission, Workforce Survey. And I'm on the commission, so I will, I know what was going on. So I, but those of you who went to the reception, did you have any ahas with that? Patsy?
I think the panel that presented the four teachers from four different parts of the state, from different kinds of care systems, first of all, they were absolutely amazing. What they had to say, so touching throughout the presentation. But the thing that's haunting about it is how much they get paid, which is hardly anything, the hours that they put in, and the education that some of them want to have that they can't, they don't have access to. And then the education that some of them have access to, but not finances for. And so we entrust our most precious, as they started the meeting with, our most precious quantity in our lives, and we entrust it to people, but we don't provide pay, support, and opportunity for them. And so it really brought that home. It brought it home in a very poignant way.
I think so. Anyone else? Patrick, did you have anything?
I just kind of reiterate what Patty, Patsy said. I thought the panel was really interesting to hear from four different segments of early childcare. You know, it always comes, you always hear the number on the return on that investment in early childhood, it's like one to twelve. It may be better than that than, you know, I know people keep talking about funding, and this will get me in trouble. But if you're, if you're going to look to funding, is it more important to put those dollars toward early childhood, or to put it to post-secondary where maybe the funding return is one to six or something? And we ought to be learning from that as we all gross, grouse about where the money's coming from and how much money there is to do the job. A little political statement, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Well, at our commission meeting, Dr. Meisels mentioned wanting to delve into teosis. So the politics are out there. I don't know that I want to be a part of that conversation.
Just real quick, because it's so late at the end of the day. But I love your whole commission's attitude for Nebraska's a great place to be a baby. And if it is a great place to be the baby, we need to make sure we're providing support and intervention for children early, to echo you, and also to support the parents of these children. And the in-home daycare providers, I mean, kudos to all of them. And then the ones that do the community daycare and step up to quality in school, early childhood.
Dr. Meisels wants to put that statement on a license plate.
I love that.
So who knows? Okay, does anybody have anything to share about just other meetings that you went to? Patrick?
Again, I think it was Patsy and I that were at, we went to the Stance Meeting this last week, last week, I guess it was, which is a group of seventeen smaller or mid-size school districts. And it was interesting to, you know, I thought I was just going to go and listen. And then we had, I think Patsy and I ended up talking for an hour, talking about the State Board of Education.
Well, did you give us a good recommendation?
If you go in the future, be prepared because it's, you know, you're going to be part of the program.
Yeah, they have questions, I've been to those.
So that was really interesting. It was interesting that, you know, I had a lot of concerns about the legislature and legislative issues, I thought. And this, you know, I stayed along for an hour until just about ready to adjourn, I think. But it was, it was interesting to hear their concerns about legislative issues. And they had some concerns about some other issues that I felt were kind of interesting that I've talked to some people about, so thank you.
Good, good. Rachel?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to attend a meeting with Building Healthy Futures, and Dr. Bryson went as well. And it was about a team that had gone to DC to really look at a variety of health issues. And what was most interesting are the changes and updates around Medicaid in public schools or MIPS, and really understanding how that's a piece of the puzzle that we as a board should understand, and that we as a board should understand how we can capitalize that on that for our schools and for our students. The expansion of services that's available in MIPS, states that are providing those services to students beyond special education students. In Nebraska, we look at MIPS just tied to special education. And so I think it would be advantageous for us to probably have a presentation and really all become informed a little bit more about MIPS. The department is involved in that from a financial perspective. You know, understanding Medicaid and it as a resource for our students of need is really an important piece that we should understand.
Ryan, would you look at that and see when we can do something as a presentation with the board? Okay. Lisa?
Drew, can you just put up the group picture only? Last month, the Commissioner, John, and I went to League of Women Voters. And I'm just bringing it up again because I'm still hearing how appreciative, because we had parents there that brought their kids. And a lot of. Oh, yeah. He was making a point in this two-year-old, I think, just went, yay! Or something like that. But, but the thing is, they're still, at this last meeting, still talking about the answers that you gave to their questions. And they had some fantastic questions. And like I said, they're still talking about it and want you to come back.
Oh, meetings, meetings, meetings.
See, you can be innovative, influential.
Matt, you're on a roll, Matt, that's for sure. I'll be really quick in regards to invited to an event by the Nebraska Dyslexia Association where they had a presentation, went to a Sherwood Foundation function. Lisa and I were honored to go to a GED graduation ceremony at the Literacy Center of the Midlands. And Lisa and I met with Mike Delaney a couple weeks ago to discuss strategy and state board issues. Invited to Papillion-Lavista Foundation Award Ceremony. Also, I had the opportunity and pleasure to meet with the curriculum directors of Papillion, Papio Lavista, Bellevue, OPS, and Ralston, where they gave me some very good insight in regards to their inputs. Also, the early childhood. And lastly, the Sarpy Chamber of Commerce Economic Summit was very valuable, which included mostly CTE, Career Technical Education aspects of it, how critical it was, especially in Sarpy County with this growth.
Good, good, good.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Just very quickly, John's very good about thanking the people that provide information. I need to get better at that. I heard from Bellevue High School, Papillion-Lavista, not from Springfield, Gretna, Millard, and OPS in the input about ACT and the science standards. And I thank them for taking the time, not only to address that, but write down questions about implementation, which Sarah is going to craft an answer for me about the direction of that, and I'm going to share it with them, because I appreciate them so much.
Well, and they were very, very, very grateful too, that state board members would seek their inputs. They were very, very grateful for that, so.
Good, good.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the Omaha people and the fact that you take that time to really network within that large community, because that's a lot of, a lot of people to deal with. So, does anyone else have any individual thing that they want to share? Okay, I have requests for meeting attendance, and I'll go through these quickly. I've got requests from Patsy Cojones, Rachel, and Maureen for NASB areaship, area membership meetings on the thirteenth and the twentieth. I have requests from Open Sky, the meeting on the twenty-first in Lincoln, from Rachel, Patsy, and Molly.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I've already signed up personally to go to Open Sky. I guess I question why we necessarily, is this on the, is this there so we can expense those, that, going to that meeting? And I guess I also question why, if we're selecting Open Sky, which is a think tank, how about Plaid Institute? Because they're doing things. And I guess I have a question just as to, A, are we saying we want you to go there? And are we saying that by approval that you can expense this? And are we endorsing Open Sky, for instance, over another organization? So I, you know, I'd like to have some discussion or some thought about that.
That's a good point. Does anyone have any response?
I noticed that the Plaid Institute is having a legislative session as well. And it seems to me that think tanks are created to provide information and partnerships and success. But I definitely agree with what you just said, it shouldn't be just one and not the other. I did look at that Plaid, the Plaid Institute, do you know what they, they're having their legis? It's only, I wouldn't say to go to Open Sky to any meeting or Plaid Institute for any meeting, but if it's for legislation, that's. but if it's for legislation, that's something that will impact education in Nebraska. I don't know about you people, but I wouldn't go to a meeting just to be there. I mean, but if it's about edu-, do you know when the Plaid Institute's meeting?
I can probably find out. I think it's sometime this month, but-
We definitely need to have input from different points of view.
Rachel, did you have a comment?
Well, I think it, first of all, we go to things when we get information on if something in it we feel will help benefit us and better understand whatever the issues are or whoever the presenters are. So, I think that's an important part of our professional development. And so, I do think those are things that come up. You're always gonna find different groups, you know, that do, I think, have different pieces. I think we have to be conscientious of what we choose to go to and not go to as part of that process. I think sometimes if there's a way, like there was the live streaming for the Buffett Early Childhood Workforce Meeting, I think when we have those opportunities. I think the challenge that we have, that we always have to keep in mind, is that some of us have a large geographic region, and some of us do have greater distance, whether it's coming to a meeting here or whether it's going to things within our own area. We don't have the luxury of the convenience that three of our members have when you're relatively close, in proximity to your constituents or four of our members have relatively close. So, I think those things come into play. And I think we have to use our professional judgment when we put in a request that it's something that's important from our viewpoint. And I don't think that, I think we just have to take that into account when a request is made.
Okay, Patsy?
Well, I was just gonna say, to reiterate, if it's close and it's on the list, then I feel an obligation to go ahead and say yes, if I can put it into my schedule. And as far as ignoring any group, you know, I didn't know when a meeting was for this group. I've never said, I think, no to a group that invited me, and no matter, you know, no matter what, as long as I didn't have something on my calendar. So, I don't think anybody's ignoring individual groups at all. I don't think that's it. I figure it's pretty cheap for me to go some of the places as far as what we spend on it. So, I try and be mindful of that for the board.
Does that kind of give you some-
Well, I'm not questioning the importance of doing that, and I understand distance involved. But again, we've got one group on here that supposedly we're asking for permission to go to. We've got another group that, you know, is a think tank, which may be differing on, you know, it may not always support what we're looking at, but there are some things that they do that do support what we want. And we're ignoring them. And at the same time, I'm questioning, by virtue of the fact that it's on here, does that, you know, and I'm looking, I've been looking at, as you know, travel expenses. I'm concerned about travel expenses. You know, we've got an issue in the state where we don't have the funding. We've got, we talked about finance issues this morning, where we're looking for deficit requests in the upcoming year that are, if they're not funded, are gonna have to somehow be funded by this body. And I guess I'm just saying, where does it end and where does it start? And I'd like to know, you know, whether, you know, we ought to be expensing, for instance, mileage to go to the event, or whether people are doing it. Is that a tacit, a tacit way of saying we approve? And you go ahead and file for mileage, or you go ahead and spend the night in a hotel? I think those are issues that need to be talked about.
Mr. McPherson, use your best judgment. Use your best judgment, sir. You can do that.
John, it's not a matter of using my best judgment. It's a matter of simply, we've got an obligation to the taxpayers, and we got an obligation to the spending for this organization. And I'm trying to get some clarification, just as I'm gonna ask for clarification on how many people go to Atlanta in November. I personally am gonna remove my name from that. I have never been, and I'm probably never gonna end up going because of that. We've got an obligation to the taxpayers that elected us, John.
Use your best judgment, Pat. That's what they pay you for.
And I'm using my best judgment.
Yeah, that's pretty obvious.
Just getting length. Lisa?
Just to your point about the Plaid Institute, I didn't get any information about that at all.
It's the twenty-sixth, if anybody can vote.
But I'm just saying why maybe some people didn't sign up. Maybe it's, you know, maybe they need to get us on the list.
Tomorrow, might I too bela-, to add that if some of our board members-
Well, I think this is a discussion that does need to, if we've got differences of opinion, needs to happen. I'm sitting here thinking that perhaps it is, we put it to a committee, and I can't think which committee we'd give it to.
Well, we already have a policy on attendance, don't we?
So, one of my recommendations for everybody is to go back and read B seven as a board policy. And the reason I say that, because I think, I think when you look at that, you have to be able to determine whether or not every single event that you get invited to actually qualifies under the, and I think that's a fair question to ask. Because I actually have to go back, and I can't give Pat an answer on that based on this policy. It might mean that that's not terribly clear, and if it's not terribly clear to me, I will tell you from a board staff perspective and from the staff of the agency, it's something that you actually have to go through, right? Instead of staff making a judgment. And it's always a bit uncomfortable when somebody asks us, well, can we? That's why you have this conversation. That's why it's on the agenda. So, I want you to get clarity around it, whichever way. I mean, I'm not gonna, you know, whichever way, that I want you to feel clear that you understand what can be covered and what can't. But I don't know how to do that other than to have you go back and look at B seven for yourselves, right? So, you can have a pretty informed conversation about what that means. And if you think it needs policy work, then to return it to the policy committee to get some clarity around it. That's what I recommend. Because I don't, I think everybody's trying to gauge that, and I think everybody wants to do the right thing. So, I just want you to have agreement about what that would happen to be.
There's a lot of things that I go to that I wouldn't, first of all, probably be a member of or go to, because I am on the state board now. I put it into my calendar, but it's not on any bill that I turn in.
Sure, sure. Well, let's do that. Let's have everyone go back and read the policy. If you have questions, please write them down, and then we can decide if we want to refer it back to the policy committee, because we did go through that a year or so ago, and get some clarification. I think that's important.
Is it too late for people to go to the Plaid Institute meeting on the twenty-sixth?
I'm sure it's not. I can get you the information, and they do allow elected officials to go for free.
Well, to understand the legislation from different perspectives, it's here.
Okay, let's see. We also had an area meeting for Rachel in Fremont. Molly has requested attendance at Engaging Communities meeting in Sha-
I'm not going, I'm not going to Shafran.
Not going, okay. All right.
Pat?
Yes.
Would you cross me off of Norfolk?
Sure.
I'm not gonna be able to make that date.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's see. And Patsy, Nebraska City? Okay, John and Patrick and Patsy and Lisa for the NASB meeting in Omaha in October. And that's all in your little community there. We have for the conference in Atlanta, Rachel, myself, Patrick, Patty, Molly, and Lisa. And I will say this, we are looking into that whole thing about whether or not, there's a possibility that My Way might be able to be paid for through the Early Childhood Grant. We're looking at, you know, other options through NASB as to what committee we have people on or why they're there to see, because we do have other avenues sometimes for paying for those things. So, we'll let you know about that.
Again, please remove my name from that, and I'm gonna expect that we're gonna be following our policy in that regard.
Oh, they're really planning ahead. We have people already saying that they will go to, would like to go to the NASB convention in November. That's Molly, Lisa. And Maureen said she was gonna go on Thursday only. And then, the gifted conference in February, request from Molly, Patsy, and Lisa, and that's in Omaha. So, we'll vote on that tomorrow. It's in Lavista.
Lavista.
Mine also, please.
I'd like to have my name added to that.
Okay. Yes, please. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm assuming on the NASB that we may be doing some sort of presentation as a board or something.
I got an agenda, and I think it's-
Let us know. That would be great.
It's on Thursday morning. I don't know that we have come to, we had a little bit of a discussion yesterday, I did with the Commissioner, as to what they wanted us to do, because in the past, I'm not sure that just going up there for an hour and everybody doing the, you know how I don't like panel discussions? We wanna look at that a little more about how effective our presentation is and what we want to talk about. So, we'll let you know about that. But I think it's Thursday morning.
And I do have a comment on that. They talked about it at the area meeting. And they're, the whole thing is aligning the vision. And they are really focusing on our strategic plan and where we're going. And they want to be supportive of the state board of ads. So, if you can, go to your, to the NASB meeting, please do.
I have a program for that convention, too, that NASB.
Yeah, I think I got an email about it.
You guys can take a look at it.
Yeah, okay.
See if it's something you want to do.
Okay, so, the additional requests I have are from Maureen and Patrick and Patsy for the November meeting. And I think that's all I had added, and I took the other names off. Travel requests will be approved tomorrow, if you so choose. And your monthly, the monthly board travel expense report is attached in your list. And other than that, is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have a copy of that policy for everyone to take home with them.
There you go. All right. This is, meeting is adjourned. We will meet tomorrow for our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at nine o'clock in this room. Thank you.